Okay, we're gonna convene the committee on finance for our first agenda. Ten o'clock agenda. First up is House Bill 133 H D two relating to surfing. Vice Chair.
First up, we have the Governor's Sports Task Force in support.
Good morning, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, and members of the House Committee on Finance. I'm Keith Amemia, and I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Governor's Sports Task Force, and I'm testifying in strong support of House Bill 133. I've already submitted written testimony, but I wanted to address two issues that have been raised by those who oppose the bill or have concerns about the bill. The first is safety, and the second is cost. In terms of safety, I don't know if any of you were in the legislature 23 years ago, but we fought the same fight to have outrigger canoe paddling approved as a high school sport. Safety and costs were raised as concerns. Those were sufficiently addressed. We had a lot of support from the outrigger canoe associations to get high school canoe paddling kickstarted. We're gonna have the same support from the surfing community across the state in terms of ensuring safety and making sure that surfing is as successful and safe as possible. We already have surfing in the Maui Interscholastic League, as Chair Yamashita knows very well. Mr. Kim Ball has overseen surfing for the Maui Interscholastic League for the last 10 years. He's done a wonderful job with the support of the surfing community, and fortunately, there have been no serious injuries in M I L surfing. And I'm confident that if surfing is made a statewide high school sport, we will mitigate the safety concerns as much as possible, just like we've done with outrigger canoe paddling. In terms of cost, similar to outrigger canoe paddling, we're gonna enlist the support of the surfing community, corporate sponsors, and others to minimize the cost to put together these surfing events. We've already got commitments from people like professional surfer Carissa Moore, who will enlist her sponsors to support surfing as best as possible. And just like canoe paddling, when it comes to running events, we're gonna get the support of volunteers in the surfing community who run surf meets to help run the high school meets at free or limited cost. Now, I asked Kim Ball to put together a budget for an entire season of high school surfing throughout the state. And I don't know what the protocol is, but I do have copies for the committee that I can either or can someone help me distribute it, please? While it's being passed around, as I mentioned, this is based on the Maui Interscholastic League surfing budget. It is a total for statewide surfing of approximately $685,000 and $685,870 per year. Given the amount of surfers that will participate in high school surfing, I submit to you that I feel that this is a reasonable amount. The benefits far outweigh the disadvantages, and this is something that's been in the works for over 10 years. There's broad support, as you saw, by the written testimony provided by surfing enthusiasts across the state. And so I humbly ask that you consider supporting the funding of surfing as an official high school sport for the '25-'26 school year. The last point that I wanna add is that outrigger canoe paddling took 10 years to be approved as a sport, and hopefully surfing will only take 10 years to be approved as a sport beginning this year. But the mechanism and the will to have a sport approved is there if there is enough interest and support, including from the Department of Education. And I know there's a lot of representatives from the DOE here. I was involved in pushing to have girls' flag football approved as a high school sport. There was a lot of interest statewide, similar to surfing and outrigger canoe paddling. We were able to enlist the support of the corporate community, the NFL. So far, we've raised over $200,000 in money, uniforms, and other in-kind donations. And lo and behold, we're gonna have high school girls' flag football beginning this spring. And I think practices and tryouts have already started, and competition will start next March. That process from beginning to end to approval by the Department of Education and the HHSAA took three months. So my point is, it doesn't have to take 10 years for a sport as important as surfing to be approved, and I humbly ask for your funding. Thank you. Any questions?
Big questions at the end.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Department of Education Superintendent Hayashi or his designee.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, and members of the committee. I'm Terri Ushijima, Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Curriculum Instructional Design, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. And thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaiian Lifeguard Association in support.
Good morning, Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. My name is Kirsten Hermstead. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaiian Lifeguard Association. We're a statewide nonprofit that supports drowning and aquatic injury prevention. Although we are statewide, I'm from Kauai, as is our president, and so I flew into this morning to talk to you in person. I will be giving testimony on another bill today. So for now, we stand in support of the surfing in schools and stand on my written testimony, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have outrigger Duke Hanamoku Foundation on Zoom.
Aloha. I'm Sarah Fairchild, the Executive Director of outrigger Duke Hanamoku Foundation, and we're also part of the Hawaii Water Safety Coalition. We support surfing, interscholastic surfing, because it will increase the level of competition in water sports and allow a lot of kids, and it's public schools particularly, to try this sport and get better at it. And like Kirsten said, to increase their water safety competency. I'd like to add that the DOE already approved this sport and created extensive safety rules for it. This bill is really just about getting some funding to get enough teams online to reach the thresholds, to have three tournaments, triggering HHSAA to have a statewide tournament. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the people who checked in. There's about seven other organizations with comments and support, about 30 individuals who also submitted written testimony and support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom? Sorry.
Hey, I'd like to testify. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record and proceed.
I'm here for coordinator Miles King on Maui. Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. But I'm here basically to answer questions. Somebody from the DOE has reached out to me once concerning our season. We've completed 10 full seasons. We would have had two more if it wasn't for COVID. We've done nearly 50 events, never had a concussion, never had a fracture, never had dislocation at any of our contests. I'm sure if you compare any other sport that had 50 events, football, soccer, wrestling, whatever, you wouldn't see the same thing. We have 12 high schools currently competing. When we started in 2014, we had eight. And just to go back to what Keith Amemia said, it's not 10 years. This was passed in 2011 in October that the State Board of Education approved surfing as an interscholastic sport. And still, we only have one surf league in the whole state. And we've proved it successful. We've proved it's safe. We've proved there's interest. I mean, we're gonna train up probably 200 young high school lifeguards this year because of the training they have to go through. Our coaches are the only ones in any sport that have to go through the kind of training to get certified to coach as far as CPR, lifeguard, ocean risk assessment, taking an ocean open ocean swimming test, time swimming test. They learned lifesaving skills and ocean rescue. They transfer this onto their students. So we talk about trying to mitigate drownings in the state. This is the best way and the cheapest way. We're doing it for free. As far as the budget, that wasn't based on our budget because we do it much cheaper here. You know, I run the events. I get a lot of volunteers. I pay ocean safety. I pay judges. And then I get some outside sponsorship. But those are based on what it costs to run meets on Oahu. Because you have, I'm not sure Sarah probably knows better than me, but you probably have 15 to 20 high school clubs that are doing the club, which is even harder because club level, you have no access to athletic trainers. You get no recognition at school and athletic banquets, no classic athlete awards. You know, you're like a step sister at school. If you're on a surf club, you get none of the amenities of being actually an interscholastic sport. So that being said, I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate about it because we've been doing it for so long. But I plugged in what the Oahu numbers are, and they're a lot more than what we are, but I understand. You know, some people don't do it for free. It's more like a business. But they're professionals. They know what they're doing, and it's time that we have it. I think if it's $685,000, that's pretty cheap to train 200 lifeguards on Maui and more on the rest of the state. So thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Was there another person on Zoom wishing to testify?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I am strong support this bill. Let me be short but brief, but we have
Sorry, Kylie, could you state your name for the record?
This is Kylie Swan. Let me go on. Sorry. My name is Kylie. I'm strong support this measure. Let me talk about the program that we're offering in short and brief. The program we have, we call Surface Healing, is based out of, in California. So we teach people disability how to surf. It's free. The Surface Healing is a nonprofit organization that teaches children with autism to surf. It was founded by Israel and Dinwiddie Pickles for the benefit of the son Isaiah Pickles, who was diagnosed with autism at age three. Surface Healing seeks to enrich life of people living with autism by exposing them to surfing. The surf camp is free of charge to autistic children and include camp in Hawaii, North Carolina, New Jersey, New York, and Rhode Island, and Puerto Rico. In August 2012, Surface Healing expanded into Toronto, Canada. For the first time organized by Aloha Toronto, was annual weekend beach festival inspired by Surface Healing. The Kelly Sittler Foundation is supporting of Surface Healing. Thanks for listening to my measure, and I hope this bill passed. Thank you. This is my testimony. Please let me know if you have any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Okay, thank you very much. Members, questions? Okay, Representative Lee.
A question from Mr. Alamea. In your capacity in the past with the $700,000 price tag, how does that compare to other interscholastic sports across the state?
Excuse me. It compares favorably with other sports in the sense that it's the same cost, if not cheaper, than other sports. Sports like football are much more expensive. Surfing is one of the cheaper sports in terms of total outlet.
Would you say like in the bottom third, bottom half?
I would say bottom 25%.
And I don't know if you know the answer, but based on this budget, what is the capacity for students to participate in terms of numbers?
Well, Kim Ball is, I still, still on Zoom, he may be better to answer that, but we projected the same amount or proportionate amount of surfers throughout the state that the Maui Interscholastic League currently has, and just extrapolated it--
Based on MIO?
Based on the MIO and their 10 years of having surfing as a sport.
Can I ask Kim?
Yeah, please.
Hey, Kim Ball, it's Mike Lee. What are the numbers you've had maybe average per year at the MIO through surfing?
I think this year, where the numbers are coming in from the 12 high schools, it'll be over 200 kids, maybe 250. I mean, just because they have a surf team, they don't allow everybody to surf. They have to pass, you know, a time swim test and have some capabilities. So, but yeah, that's just the MIO. And you're talking, what, 60, 70 high schools in the state? I don't know how many we have surfing, but certainly ALH has given me indication that they have 19 schools ready to go next year. That's what they've said. So that's all I can tell you for us.
Thanks, Mr. Ball. Thanks, Mr. Alamea.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 904-HD-1, Vice Chair.
Okay. We have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Board of Education and one individual, both of whom did not indicate they would be here. Any members in the public wishing to testify? Any members on Zoom?
Okay, thank you very much. Members, questions? Well, nobody to ask questions to. Okay, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1065-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, we have the State of Hawaii Early Learning Board on Zoom.
Aloha from Maui. I'm Elaine Yamashita, no relation to Chair. I'm the Chair of the Early Learning Board, and the Early Learning Board stands on its testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. And next, we have the Executive Office on Early Learning.
Hi, Chair Yamashita and Vice Chair Takanouchi, and members of the committee. I'm Yuko Arikoa, Cross Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand in strong support on HB 1065, and I thank the committee for hearing this bill. This bill is a housekeeping measure that does not contain an appropriation and has no significant fiscal impact. In 2021, Act 210 established the Hawaii Early Childhood Educator's Stipend Program to address the shortage of qualified early childhood educators in Hawaii. The Act specified that recipients of the stipends who do not satisfy the requirements of the program must repay the stipend funds. It also added a new section to HRS establishing the Hawaii Early Childhood Educator Special Fund into which any repaid stipend funds were to be deposited. However, Act 210 also specified that the special fund shall be abolished and repealed on June 30, 2023. As a result, the fund was abolished in 2023 and is no longer in use. HB 1065 deletes Section 302L-10 HRS, which established the Early Childhood Educator's Special Fund and redirects any stipend funds repaid by a stipend recipient to the Early Learning Special Fund instead. Thank you.
Thank you. We also received testimony from one individual in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 429-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, we have the Early Learning Board in support on Zoom.
Aloha again. The Early Learning Board stands on its testimony. Elaine Yamashita for the Early Learning Board. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have the Executive Office on Early Learning.
Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, and members of the committee. I'm Yuko Arikoa, Cross Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. The Executive Office on Early Learning is in strong support of HB 429. We thank you. We thank you to the House Majority Caucus for introducing this bill. EOL works in partnership with the Hawaii State Department of Education to administer 92 public pre-K classrooms and 74 Hawaii DOE campuses across our state. The funding and positions in this bill will allow EOL to add an additional 50 classrooms over the next two years and continue our trajectory of growth initiated by the Lieutenant Governor's Ready Kiki Initiative. We also want to note that the funding in this bill was also included in the governor's biennium budget request. We appreciate our EOL principals and other supporters who submitted testimony. We appreciate the legislature's continued investment in our youngest Kiki and their families and respectfully request your support of this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Hawaii State Public Charter School Commission.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is TJ Forrester, Deputy Director, speaking on behalf of Dr. Ed Noe and the State Public Charter School Commission. We stand on our written support and written testimony submitted in support of this bill and look forward to working with everyone involved.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association. Thank you. Testimony and support. We also received written testimony and support from Lieutenant Governor and 16 other organizations indicating all in support, as well as one individual. Is there anyone else in the room I didn't call wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 754-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi. This is Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and we stand on our written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association. Thank you, standing in support. That's all the people who indicated they would be here. We do have a number of organizations and individuals all in support. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Please just come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, Jan Masutani with the Hawaii After School Alliance, Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. Like to testify in support of HB 754. Community schools in Hawaii is a growing movement and has received increasing interest over the last few years. We now have 26 community schools this year across Oahu, Lanai, Molokai, and Hawaii Island. And while our community schools are still early on in its journey, we have made some exciting progress, and I wanted to share a couple examples. For one, the Hawaii School for the Deaf and Blind has students from Neighbor Island storming on campus, and for the last 20 years, they only received cold meals for their dinner. But thanks to their coordinator, they were able to reach out to community partners, and now they actually have hot meals for dinner. Though middle school is another great example, they've created many community partnerships with shamanad and rotary to provide after-school tutoring and partnerships with Project Vision, Kalihii Palama Center, and Hawaii Kiki to ensure that all of their students have access to dental, mental, physical health, and vision services. And because of their whole-child approach, in their strive high report for last school year, they saw increases in their regular attendance, language arts proficiency, math proficiency, and science proficiency. And we've also seen improvements in school climate, discipline, attendance, and teacher retention across many of our other schools. Through the community school strategy and the roles of the coordinator, our school gets extra capacity and support to align resources and services to address the challenges our students and families face, and ultimately help the school achieve its goals to improve outcomes for students. So we ask for your support of HB 754 to ensure that our current community schools can sustain their current efforts and support our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Any members on Zoom wishing to testify?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 624-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Psychological Association.
Aloha. Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Alex Lichten. I'm the Legislative Chair of the Hawaii Psychological Association. We're just simply asking for an amendment to include the Hawaii Psychological Association as members of the working group to look at the licensing of school psychologists. I think in order for the working group to be successful and finally achieve the licensing of school psychologists, it is important to have all the relevant stakeholders in the working group. And given that previous proposals have been to license school psychologists under the Board of Psychology, that certainly would make us a relevant stakeholder. We have an interest in looking at the scope of practice, making sure that's adequately defined, and that it lines up with training. And then we'd like to provide input into which is the appropriate supervisory regulatory mechanism, should it be Department of Education or DCCA, and what would that look like? We have a track record of working productively with other mental health professionals. We're in a coalition. Right now, we share a lobbyist with three other organizations, and we would certainly look forward to working constructively with other members of the working group, if you could please include us. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Association of School Psychologists on Zoom.
Hi, aloha. My name is Leslie Bonnick. I'm the current Legislative Chair for the Hawaii Association of School Psychologists. We're a little bit confused why the Hawaii Psych Association or any private organization that doesn't represent school psychologists would want to be involved. You know, like the California Psych Association represents school psychologists, so that would make sense, but the Hawaii Psychological Association excludes school psychologists. So it's really bizarre to us why a private organization would want to have a say in our bills. We're very comfortable working with the clinical psychologists who have already been elected or appointed to the Psychological Association, and we think that their voices will be plenty to represent the clinical psychologists there, as well as the other members who have already been recommended to the committee. This is something I've been working on. I think I wrote the first draft of the bill in 2014, so I am happy to answer any and all questions around our bill, and thank you so much for allowing me to testify today.
Thank you. Next, we have Alec Marinatic on Zoom.
Aloha, thank you for this opportunity to testify. I just want to supplement my written testimony with two pieces of information. First, I saw some testimony that noted that only one state regulates school psychologists through their Board of Psychology, and I just wanted to note that Louisiana, New Hampshire, Texas, Virginia, Ohio, and West Virginia all regulate school psychologists through their state Board of Examiners. I also want to note that we, as school psychologists, are directly named in CMS for school-based Medicaid claiming, and licensing us would allow the DOE to bill Medicaid for our services, which would provide additional mental health funding and support for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, do we also have the Board of Psychology? Please, sorry about that.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you. My name is Christopher Fernandez, Executive Officer for the Board of Psychology. I'm here to stand on the board's written testimony supporting the measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, also, three other organizations and four individuals all in support who indicated they would not be able to be here today. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 637-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and we stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Aloha, Chair. Sorry. Aloha, Chairs, committee members. My name's Chase Silver, and with the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities, we'll stand on our written testimony and support. We just wanted to add, I'm an individual who has dyslexia. I was born and raised here. I went to our public schools. I wasn't diagnosed till I was 25. I even went to our public schools until fifth grade, where I was found to be able not to be able to read, and even with that evidence, still didn't get a diagnosis. So this bill could help a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Kids Can in support.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi. My name is Erica Nakonishi-Stannis. I'm from Hawaii Kids Can. We stand on our written testimony and strong support of this bill and ask you to please help us become not the only state in the country that does not require dyslexia-sensitive screening for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We also received written testimony from about six other organizations and three individuals all in support, but indicating they wouldn't be able to be here. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 961-HD-1, Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Teri Ushijima again, representing the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Sarah Milliantalaff, and on behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, really excited to see this bill. Librarians are intellectual freedom fighters, and it was shocking to me to learn that only, I'm a teacher, and only 20% of our Hawaii public schools actually have actual librarians. And if you're not aware, librarians have library science degrees, so they have advanced degrees in information studies, and it's really critical. So when I got to my school, Alema Intermediate in Ebe Beach in 2017, I asked my department chair, I was like, hey, I want to do this lesson, I want to co-teach with the librarian, and she kind of laughed at me. She was like, we don't have a librarian. I was like, what kind of middle school doesn't have a librarian? It just didn't even occur to me that was a possibility. And what it seems, because of budget constrictions, a lot of schools opt to hire someone to use the checker outer gun, you know, to scan the library books, as opposed to having somebody who's curating the information. And school librarians play a vital role in fostering literacy, critical thinking, and a love for learning among students. They provide access to a diverse range of books, resources, and they help students develop strong reading skills that are essential for academic success. And plus, right now, just being honest, while we're sitting with dealing with a lot of the changes to technology, librarians help with that, too, with using AI ethically, with addressing misinformation, and just fostering that love of learning and that safe space for being a library. All schools should have a school librarian, so please support this.
Thank you. We also have Mira Garud on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Mahalo for allowing this opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Mira Garud, and I'm just delighted to see all of the testimony that's been submitted in support. I wanted to add a couple of comments. Just like I heard from the representative from HSTA, I've heard--
Data in 2023 provided by DOE showed that it's 63 schools that had a certified librarian, so 24%. But the data in this bill states 75 schools. So if that data could be confirmed, that would be great. Mahalo for this opportunity.
Thank you. We have two other organizations and about 15 individuals all in support who indicate they would not be able to be here. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 961, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Sarah Millian-Talaffan. On behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 962, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, Hawaii State Teachers Association in support. Thank you. Next, we have Mira Garud on Zoom.
Aloha. Very similar bill to the previous one. My name is Mira Garud, and I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, members, any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 962, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, Hawaii State Teachers Association in support. Thank you. Next, we have Mira Garud on Zoom.
Aloha. Very similar bill to the previous one. My name is Mira Garud, and I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 683, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, we have Department of Education with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dino Chita, Deputy Superintendent with DOE. We stand on our written comments on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support. Thank you. Next, we have Mira Garud on Zoom.
Aloha. Very similar bill to the previous one. My name is Mira Garud, and I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 962, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha. Very similar bill to the previous one. My name is Mira Garud, and I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 962, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, Hawaii State Teachers Association in support. Thank you. Next, we have Mira Garud on Zoom.
Aloha. Very similar bill to the previous one. My name is Mira Garud, and I just wanted to add a few comments about how this bill would basically be an expanded version and allow all the schools that currently do not have a school librarian to try this program and see what happens when a school librarian is available on their campus. I did hear the previous comments from the last bill. Just wanted to add a couple of my insights about the difficulty with recruiting new school librarians, because there's no requirement for a school to have a librarian. I know a number of people who opt to not add that certification because they're not going to be sure that they will have a position. And it's very, you know, if that position gets cut, will they get moved into the classroom? So there's a number of issues there. So just wanted to add that comment and happy to answer any questions, too. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, members, again, two other organizations in support, as well as about 15 individuals all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 683, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, we have Department of Education with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dino Chita, Deputy Superintendent with DOE. We stand on our written comments on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Sarah Millian-Talaffan. On behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, I just want to illustrate, as a teacher, as a teaching practitioner, the need for this. One, I was kind of surprised we didn't have a coordinator already right now. So I'm at Alima Intermediate in Evi Beach, next to Campbell High School. So we have students who have to get a bus from Iroquois Point to come to us. That Iroquois Point bus is pretty much half an hour to 45 minutes late every day, and it's something we've worked and worked and worked and tried on this. I will say, if you remember your schooling experience, the highlight of kids schooling in middle school is Spirit Week, and on Friday during Spirit Week, you have this big cheer off competition Friday morning. All of the Iroquois Point bus kids last year missed the cheer off competition because the bus was so late. The bus is also regularly had, like, an hour to almost two hours after school to get them back to Iroquois Point, which kind of can lead to kids getting up to such an anigans, you know, at school. This is something that we really desperately need. I will also say, as a teacher who have brought students to this body to speak to you, it's $350 to get a bus to come to the Capitol and go back to Evi Beach, and it is very hard and very tough to coordinate. Same thing with coordinating field trips. You have a very small window of what you're able to do with buses. Buses are a huge problem. We definitely need to get this under control, and we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we also have three other organizations and two individuals all in support who indicated they would not be able to join us. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Got one.
Oh, please go ahead. State your name for the record and proceed.
This is Kylie Swan, supporting this bill because school transportation for students is very paramount in this measure. Maybe brief, short and brief. The James Campbell High School, they utilize a Holo program to use the city bus program to get to school, where they live far away, they're ready from the school. So like, when students catch the bus go to school, they can catch the either bus go to school. After school, students usually catch the bus go home. The DOE pays for the Holo program. Thank you for allowing me to testify. Please let me have any questions we have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 424, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Hawaii Department of Education with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dino Chita, Deputy Superintendent with DOE. We stand on our written comments on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Sarah Millian-Talaffan. On behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, I just want to illustrate, as a teacher, as a teaching practitioner, the need for this. One, I was kind of surprised we didn't have a coordinator already right now. So I'm at Alima Intermediate in Evi Beach, next to Campbell High School. So we have students who have to get a bus from Iroquois Point to come to us. That Iroquois Point bus is pretty much half an hour to 45 minutes late every day, and it's something we've worked and worked and worked and tried on this. I will say, if you remember your schooling experience, the highlight of kids schooling in middle school is Spirit Week, and on Friday during Spirit Week, you have this big cheer off competition Friday morning. All of the Iroquois Point bus kids last year missed the cheer off competition because the bus was so late. The bus is also regularly had, like, an hour to almost two hours after school to get them back to Iroquois Point, which kind of can lead to kids getting up to such an anigans, you know, at school. This is something that we really desperately need. I will also say, as a teacher who have brought students to this body to speak to you, it's $350 to get a bus to come to the Capitol and go back to Evi Beach, and it is very hard and very tough to coordinate. Same thing with coordinating field trips. You have a very small window of what you're able to do with buses. Buses are a huge problem. We definitely need to get this under control, and we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we also have three other organizations and two individuals all in support who indicated they would not be able to join us. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Got one.
Oh, please go ahead. State your name for the record and proceed.
This is Kylie Swan, supporting this bill because school transportation for students is very paramount in this measure. Maybe brief, short and brief. The James Campbell High School, they utilize a Holo program to use the city bus program to get to school, where they live far away, they're ready from the school. So like, when students catch the bus go to school, they can catch the either bus go to school. After school, students usually catch the city bus go home. The DOE pays for the Holo program. Thank you for allowing me to testify. Please let me have any questions we have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 424, HD1. Vice Chair.
First up, Hawaii Department of Education with comments.
Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dino Chita, with Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments on the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Sarah Millian-Talaffan. On behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association, so when it comes to this bill, the first thing I kind of wanted to share is we would be interested in an amendment similar to Senate Bill 1300, which would extend to ALIS families to try to see if we can get some more people involved in this program. I need this board to understand that school meals are school supplies, like, full stop. Like, that's one of the best weapons I have as an educator to make sure my kids are on level, is that they get breakfast and lunch. And if you want to help us out, like, getting them breakfast and lunch would be huge when it comes to moving this forward. There are a lot of smart people in this room who have submitted testimony and who are going to tell you the facts and figures. You've had the facts and figures, so please allow me to be the heart. So, in my classroom, I keep chopsticks. I write a lot of Donors Choose grants, which is to help, like, get supplies for my classroom. And I keep chopsticks so the kids have something to eat. And a girl asked for a pair of chopsticks. I gave her one, and she asked for three more, and I thought they were playing with them or, you know, messing around. And I look over, and she has a Simon bowl, and there are four girls with four sets of chopsticks eating out of one Simon bowl. And to me, that picture is a policy failure. If four kids are eating out of one bowl, they are hungry, and we, as the adults, are not taking care of them to the point that the kids have learned how to care for each other by making sure that they can feed each other. Another example I'll give you is I had a student, during COVID, meals were free. We fed kids during COVID, and when they came back to school and they went to the cafeteria and realized they didn't get meals, the faces, the disappointment, it was really shocking as educators.
Morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Dino Chito with Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony providing comments on the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association with comments.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair, Sarah Millian Zalafan on behalf of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. So when it comes to this bill, the first thing I kind of wanted to share is we would be interested in an amendment similar to Senate Bill 1300, which would extend to Alice families to try to see if we can get some more people involved in this program. I need this board to understand that school meals are school supplies, like full stop. Like, that's one of the best weapons I have as an educator to make sure my kids are on level is that they get breakfast and lunch. And if you want to help us out, getting them breakfast and lunch would be huge when it comes to moving this forward. There are a lot of smart people in this room who have submitted testimony and who are going to tell you the facts and figures. You've had the facts and figures, so please allow me to be the heart. So, in my classroom, I keep chopsticks. I write a lot of Donors Choose Grants, which is to help like get supplies for my classroom. And I keep chopsticks so the kids have something to eat. And a girl asked for a pair of chopsticks. I gave her one, and she asked for three more. And I thought they were playing with them or, you know, messing around. And I look over and she has a Simon bowl, and there are four girls with four sets of chopsticks eating out of one Simon bowl. And to me, that picture is a policy failure. If four kids are eating out of one bowl, they are hungry and we, as the adults, are not taking care of them to the point that the kids have learned how to care for each other by making sure that they can feed each other. Another example I'll give you is I had a student, during COVID, meals were free. We fed kids during COVID, and when they came back to school and they went to the cafeteria and realized they didn't get meals, the faces, the disappointment, it was really shocking as educators. And as a teacher, I don't make a living wage, so providing food for kids is a really cost problem on my family, but also I can't stand to see hungry kids. So I, like so many other teachers, are buying food for these kids who do not have. So, boy, six foot tall, big boy, another kid brings this kid to me at lunch, and this kid is huffing and puffing, and he is trying not to cry. And the boy looks over at me and says, "Miss, I brought him to your classroom because the lunch lady took away his tray because he had too much lunch debt and he couldn't eat today." So that child was shamed in front of his peers, and that child was hungry, and that child was hurt. And the other kid knew, "Oh, Millie's got food. I'm gonna go ahead and feed that kid." And again, that example of that kid, I can, I can see his face, like it doesn't leave me. And that's a policy failure because we have to feed hungry kids. School meals are school supplies. I don't think this is the superior vehicle of the session, and I've been with, with kids at this, in this building for four years trying to work on free and reduced lunch and making sure that hungry kids are fed. I was a free lunch kid myself as the oldest of five kids to a single mother. Our state president for HSTA, Ose Tui, who a lot of you have heard from, was also a free lunch kid. These programs work when we implement them correctly, and kids, we just got a few hungry kids.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Public Health Institute in support.
Nate Hicks, Hawaii Public Health Institute, aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I want to echo everything that HSTA said, and I mean, can we take for a second to imagine that after this committee hearing, lunch was brought in for all of us, but you individually were not able to eat? How would that make you feel? Just because your parents didn't have the resources to be able to provide you food, right? You're going to be ostracized amongst your fam, amongst your friends, unable to enjoy the free time you have to enjoy lunch with your peers. We have the opportunity to make sure that this doesn't happen, to make sure that all students have the, have the ability to eat. Eight states have already done it. We did it for two years. This is a very small drop in the bucket when it comes to the finances. The DOE budget annually is about $2 billion. The estimated loss in revenue by providing free school meals is around $20 million, or just 1% of the overall DOE budget. This is a literal drop in the bucket. This is something that we can provide, and I think we should, to make sure that, again, our education system is robust as it is, as it can be, because, again, school meals are school supplies. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have aloha care on Zoom in support. Okay, next, we have Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom in support. Next, we have Hawaii Apple Seed in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Danielle Spoto with Hawaii Apple Seed. We stand in strong support of this measure. I want to note that this is the fourth year that similar legislation has been put before the legislature. And last year, this committee had the opportunity to hear a similar bill that actually extended meals to, free meals to all students, and it was able to pass through. We believe that, you know, if government is going to do anything, it's to provide safety nets for those families that fall in the gap between those very low income thresholds and those Alice families that we know are not being met by those safety net programs. And this is just, again, like others have said, something that's really important so that kids can succeed, making sure that every child has a healthy breakfast and lunch. We know that sometimes the meals that are provided at school are the only balanced meals that some students get in a day. They might get, you know, some dry Simon or a musubi or something like that, but this, these meals are designed to contain certain amounts of protein, fruits, vegetables, and they are intended to be a balanced meal. So they're really important for those kids to succeed. I also want to apologize. There's a typo in our written testimony on the first chart. It says our cost estimates, and the first chart on the right side there says reduced price students only. Those cost estimates are actually if we were to extend it to all students, including those that are currently on the full paid plan. So we estimate that that would be... Okay, no, I'm right. I, I fixed it, I believe. The full estimate is around 26 million, and the reduced price estimate we're estimating is under half a million dollars. So please consider passing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also have nine other organizations in support and about 15 individuals providing comments and in support who indicate they would not be here with us today. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, Members, any questions?
My question's for DOE. You mentioned in your testimony, you requested that the one-quarter requirement remain as a floor rather than a ceiling. If provided with proper funding, is there any reason for this?
For the floor?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think the floor is at, what a ceiling is at 50% right now, right? And our current charges, I think we're like, combined is at about 27%. So if we keep everything the same, lowering it to 25%, we would be meeting the requirement in the statute.
Okay, got it. And then, we heard from, from HSTA that we have already provided universal free school meals during COVID. Again, if provided with proper funding, is there any reason we couldn't do that now?
Yeah, all it takes is money, right? So, yeah.
Okay, so with the, with the money, we could do it.
Right. We're trying to run the numbers now, but how much that would cost the state?
Okay. And is there disagreement among the estimates that were provided by the...
It's kind of complicated because you have the federal reimbursements, and then you have CEP schools, and it's kind of individually based. So trying to come up with a figure, dealing with individual schools and the different populations makes it really difficult.
Okay.
So we're trying to crank the numbers right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Further questions? You can stay. Anybody else? Okay, so, you know, at, at the end of the day, all, all of these things are, come down to money, and as you stated. So we've, so, and I'm just gonna make a, you know, sorry you had to be the guinea pig. But, you know, yesterday, we tried to do a bill that actually tried to create revenue by repealing all the tax credits that were suggested by the auditor, as well as large ones that, a tax credit at the end of the day is a reduction in taxes. You know, the solar credit is about $115 million. The film credit is about a $50 million credit. At the end of the day, the safety net is what I believe needs to be funded, but many times, we fund these other credits that are not safety net priorities. And nobody testified in favor to try and generate revenue for these types of programs. Does the department want to chime in at some point on these kind of things?
I have to defer that to Superintendent.
Hello Chair, Keith Ayashi, Superintendent. Thank you very much for, for those insights. I think we totally understand that, and the department, that revenue to support programs is, is limited. We can definitely connect up with you on the side after the, after the conference, the hearing. But we do also realize that there are, there are various needs within the Department of Education to support our students, and we're very grateful to the legislature for providing those supports. And so I look forward to meeting with you offline on this meeting to, to see how we can continue to work together.
Okay. And, you know, and I'm sorry to just bring it up for you guys, but at the end of the day, right, the pie is only so big, we have only so much money, we have to make choices. And I just believe that the safety net is the, what we should be funding. And nobody came out to like, you know, support these bills that would actually find money for you. But anyway, thank you very much.
Understood.
Okay, Members, yeah, thank you. Okay, Members, any questions? Further questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1293 HD1, Vice Chair.
First, we have the State Procurement Office in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Bonnie Kahakui, Administrator for the State Procurement Office. We oppose the language of this bill. The proposed language does not address the procedures for purchasing exceeding 25 to less than $100,000, which is contrary to the intent of the bill. The SPO provided recommendations how we can simplify the process, and also provides language to ensure compliance, accountability, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Education with comments.
Again, Dino Chito, Deputy Superintendent. We stand on our written testimony providing comments on the bill, but we also support what the SPO just said, too. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Hawaii Farm to School Network.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Kavika Kahayapo with the Farm to School Network. We are in strong support of this policy. We believe that Act 175, getting 30 to 30% local procurement by 2030, has been actually going from 6.2 to 5.4 over the last few years. I think this bill would help to create tools so that they can purchase from local farmers. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also had five other organizations in support and about 28 other individuals all in support who indicate they would not be joining us for the hearing. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, Members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 987 HD1, Vice Chair.
First, we have the State Procurement Office in support.
Good morning again, Bonnie Kahakui, Administrator, State Procurement Office, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. We stand in strong support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. We also received support from the Department of Accounting and General Services. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you very much, Member, Questions, Members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 763 HD1, Vice Chair.
First, we have Department of Education with comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Terry Ushijima, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony, which provides comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Sarah Millian Zalafan on behalf of HSTA. I'm really passionate about this issue. I'm a political science major who believed a lot in service to my country, so I joined Teach for America, and I've been teaching for 19 years. Civics is a key part of that. None of you, I imagine, would be here without some level of civics education. So I'll keep my comments brief, but I did write them down. Civics education matters because it helps individuals understand their rights and responsibilities as members of a democratic society. It equips people with the knowledge needed to participate effectively in government, make informed decisions, and hold leaders accountable. A strong civic education fosters critical thinking, encourages civic engagement like voting and community service, and promotes an understanding of the rule of law, constitutional principles, and the importance of civil discourse. Without it, democracy can weaken, as citizens may lack the awareness or skills needed to advocate for their interests and contribute to the common good. Now more than ever, we need this in this country, so please support this.
Thank you. We also received six pieces testimony in support and with comments from organizations and seven individuals in support who indicated they would not be present. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, Members? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1234 HD1, Vice Chair.
First, we have Department of Education with comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Terry Ushijima, representing the department. We stand on our written testimony providing comments. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Health on Zoom. Not present. Next, we have the Hawaii Lifeguard Association in support.
Good morning again, or, yeah, still morning, Chairs and Members of the Committee. I'm Kirsten Hermstead. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Lifeguard Association. The work that we do with the association is completely focused on preventing drowning and aquatic injuries. I did provide written testimony that requested one language change potentially to this bill, and that would be to require that there be pre and post skills assessment done at the end of the program for each child. This is important data for the future of water safety education here in Hawaii. I'm gonna wing it a little bit here. I was driving in the dark on Kauai this morning, and I had a thought. So I would like to provide you with some kind of big picture on this topic. My father was a surfer and a lifeguard and a firefighter, so I grew up with this topic all around me all the time. And as a surfer, he had a lot of surfboards, and they, he called them his quiver. He had one for every condition. Whatever kind of wave was coming, he had a board for that. I loved that word when I was a kid, quiver. And I learned in my career going on that most problems didn't just have one solution. There was, you needed a quiver. You needed all kinds of different methods of solving a problem. And that's how water safety is here in Hawaii. We need a quiver. This bill is one piece of that puzzle. You all are part of the quiver. We need to take care of water safety in Hawaii. It's the number one cause of death for our keiki in this state. It's the number one cause of death for our visitors in this state. Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders drown at a higher rate than any other ethnicity in this state. It's a real problem. So my goal, and our goal in the association is, within five to seven years, Hawaii is known for its innovative, effective, amazing water safety for all of our visitors, all of our kids, all of our native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders. Let's shift the narrative. Let's no longer be number two in the country with the highest drowning rate. No more of that. Five to seven years. This pilot is part of that. So let's switch the, let's switch it up. Let's be excellent and have, be the leaders in water safety internationally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Water Safety Coalition in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name's Dan Warden. I submitted testimony on behalf of the Water Safety Coalition, and I just wanted to show up here personally to show my support in person, highlight a couple of comments, and then be available for questions if we need. I want to speak a couple, I want to say a couple of things that speak to why during school hours, education is the best path toward decreasing drowning in the state. There's various factors that limit the effectiveness of extracurricular options. Public programs lack the resources to meet current demand. We'll hear some other testimony as well. I know that's been submitted on people that try and sign up for programs, and you just can't get into any here. Like, there just isn't enough available programming to meet the demand. The cost of private lessons is prohibitive for many families. The time and transportation and the commitment to get there is a burden on a lot of those same families. After-school and weekend programs tend to emphasize competitive swimming strokes as opposed to aquatic safety competencies, which doesn't adequately and holistically address the issue of drowning. And then parents' own fearfulness of the water or an overconfidence in the protective ability of just the ability to swim can influence their choice of enrolling their children. So simply put, the best way to reach the broadest number of children is to provide vital safety education during school hours. This bill includes that any aquatic safety education must use that valuable time effectively. It requires education to align with health education standards and physical education standards. So you use the aquatic safety as a context for addressing health and wellness standards, similar to doing a soccer unit in school or nutrition unit in school. I do really want to commend the current efforts going on, especially the DOE with the program that they're running this spring or planning on this spring. But to my knowledge, there's no funding to continue that program. And the data shows that a majority of students in Hawaii don't have, they lack the basic skills to avoid or recover from a drowning situation. So the urgency in making an impact is real. We don't want to lose momentum. And so what this bill is doing, appropriate funding to provide this vital safety education for the upcoming school years, it's necessary to ensure that the current efforts being undertaken by a variety of community and state partners continues towards building an equitable and scalable solution that make a lasting impact in the state. Again, I'm available for questions afterwards. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Outrigger Duke Kahanamoku Foundation on Zoom in support.
Hello, Sarah Fairchild again. I'd like to respond to part of DOE's testimony that was submitted. They mentioned that they're using the Nakamakai written materials as a way to teach water safety, and they are highly respected. In fact, our, our foundation gives grants to them every year, and we feel like they are great partners in this. But what their workbooks teach are things like, don't swim without a lifeguard and observe the ocean conditions. These are great things to teach kids, but it's not teaching them physically what to do with their body should they fall into water. You just can't teach swimming from a book. The DOE testimony also stated that some kids might have had lessons already, and why teach them? That may be true, but they may not have all 15 skills deemed necessary to prevent a drowning. Further, we have other subjects where kids come in with some of the skills. We don't just not teach them reading if they have some reading skills already. The department is also concerned that swimming may usurp other lessons. My understanding is that these swim lessons would be under an hour a few times a week for a few weeks. Drowning is the leading cause of death for kids in Hawaii ages 1 to 15. We're ranked second in the nation for rate of drowning among residents. We are surrounded by water. This literally is a vital skill. Further, I've been part of the drafting of this year's bill. It was our understanding when we were drafting it that the program planned for Palama this spring, funded by the DOE, was a one-off program with leftover funds, and that there were, there was no real plan to continue it. The word pilot was not in the contract. Now the DOE is calling this program a pilot. I think that's great, but I'd suggest that then this bill move forward, and then the DOE could use the currently planned program at Palama as the pilot, which should save some time and allow for quicker reporting back to the legislature. Finally, I want to recognize, like the Hawaiian Lifeguard Association alluded to, that this is a very complex problem. It's not going to be solved by just this kind of program. We're really going to need the DOE to work with the various county pools and nonprofits over the long term. Kona County Schools are already teaching some DOE schools during the school day for schools that are with, are in walking distance to their pools. This is costing no extra money to the DOE or to the county. I think we should build on that and then supplement it with programs like this pilot, using nonprofits across the state and...
Thank you. Next, we have Miriam Sabui in support. Please.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Miriam Sabui. I am in strong support of this bill. I'm here today sharing my experience as a parent trying to register my child to swimming lessons. On registration day, I am logged into my county of Honolulu's online portal with my phone and computer, ready to hit the registration button at 5:00 PM sharp. I even take time off work to make sure I don't miss my chance. I say chance because the spots fill up within seconds with the online platform online often crashing quickly after opening. I start to wonder what the gap between the offer and the demand might be. The population of kids age 5 to 14 years in the county of Honolulu is 114,811 people, based on the latest census data. In contrast, there were approximately 486 spots for kids aged 5 to 12 years through the county of Honolulu's Learn to Swim Program for Spring 2025, which represents less than 1% of the county's population for that age group. Swimming is the only sport that saves lives. Swimming is a life skill. I urge you to consider supporting this bill, which will not only save lives, but make water safety education accessible in an equitable way to all keikis in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also received three organizations supporting this and two other individuals all in support indicating they would not be with us today. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Oh, please? Just please identify yourself and then proceed.
So I'm Allison Shafers. I'm a volunteer bereaved parent for the Hawaii Water Safety Coalition. My daughter, Charlotte Shafers, Charlotte Sharky Shafers drowned in 2004 in a flooded detention pond. The child that she went into the detention pond to rescue did not know how to swim. We, as a coalition, formed in 2023 because the US wrote the first national water safety plan, and they asked all states to do a water safety plan. So I volunteered my time because I'm impassioned about drowning prevention, because I have experienced that loss, to help write our first Hawaii water safety plan. And one of the things that's pretty clear in that plan, we have some big ideas, but the smaller idea is probably the most important one. Our kids here need to learn to swim. We have statistics in there that show that less than 2% of our second graders have the skills to prevent a drowning if they would fall into the water. Also, the chance of a child learning to swim if the parent can't swim is 19%. We know that lessons are effective, and the reason I know that is because when you look at the states, Hawaii is the second highest drowning rate for residents in the nation. A lot of people will tell me, "Oh, well, that's just because we're surrounded by water," but that's not true. New York, New Jersey have the best drowning rates. They also have water. The difference is, they offer in-school lessons. California is in the middle of the plan of states for drowning, significantly less than us. We are at the highest end because we don't invest in our keiki in this way. And I know that there are costs to these investments, but let me tell but let me tell you, when we're talking about drowning, drowning carries a cost too. It carries an emotional cost to our communities. It takes people away from us that can never be returned. But beyond that, there are productivity losses for drowning, there are medical costs. So it is expensive to allow people to drown. And the other thing I would say is, the saddest thing about all of this is in almost every case, drowning is preventable. So the other issue is the equity issue. The reason in-school lessons are the best is, I think, the reason that we have the highest rate of resident drowning for Pacific Islanders and native Hawaiians. It's our cost of living. We have the world's best watermen and waterwomen, but those skills aren't getting passed down. I think it's because parents are working three jobs, that they're stuck in traffic, they can't get the keki to lessons. On the west side of Oahu, where the rest of our native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders live, there aren't any public swimming pools. You know, we can do better, and we have in the past. We've actually funded DOE lessons in the past. They stopped programs in the late 1980s. You know, I think it was maybe a return to other focus, but clearly, that didn't work for us. Our drowning rates are now at a crisis. And I just would say that the equity issue, I think alone, speaks to why we should do this in the classrooms. After-school programs, even, a lot of parents can't afford that. I mean, I was even a latchkey kid in my home, so I think a lot of us can recognize that. That costs money. And then parents testify about not being able to get into the Department of Parks and Recreation programs. Well, you know, you need a computer to register. The slots are gone in five minutes. If you don't have a computer, you can't do that. So I would just ask you to consider putting our keki first in this. I know that the Department of Education has indicated that they have a program, but it's only going to reach 200 kids, and the funding stops. We have, and I've heard other members kind of mention, "Well, why should I support this if the pilot won't be in my district?" But we have members that are working on solutions. So this is a two-year pilot. So by year two, it maybe could get to anybody's district. We have members that are working on storage container pools, where they could actually put a pool on a mobile platform and drive it to a school. So it could possibly be in any one of your districts if you just give us a little bit of time to scale up. And that's why we need this two-year pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did have your testimony. Sorry, I just didn't have you checked in, but thank you, Ms. Shafers. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Uh, Chair.
Please go ahead. I'll state your name for the record and proceed.
This is Kylie Swan, Chair, roommate, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm a strong supporter of this bill because DOE is the... Sorry. Swimming safety is one of the top priorities in department education settings. And thankful that we do testify. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Okay, members, question? Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, Vice Chair.
Sorry. Quick question for Department of Education. The pilot that you mentioned testimony and several of the testifiers also kind of talked about... Sorry, is that the same program? The Palama settlement, the 200 kids? Is that the pilot you guys are referencing?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, so the same, we're all talking about the same thing. Okay, what's the timing for this? Like, so it seems like it's ongoing. What's the timing for the completion? And then when would you be expecting the report from the program?
So we've spent the last few months preparing to start it up, doing all the, you know, the background work that has to be done with the procurement office and all of that. And so I'll let our PE specialists respond.
Hi, George Centale, Education Specialist with the DOE. Yeah, so the program is, the in-class sessions are expected to start late February, and then over the next few months will be the in-pool sessions. Eight in-pool sessions, about 30 minutes each.
Sorry, so we're starting later this month and then running whatever weeks? And then that's the close of the program? Then you're going to generate the report?
Right. That's one of the expectations at the end, is to get a report back from the vendor. June 30 is the end of the contract.
And then potentially, if it's positive and something you think you could pilot elsewhere, we just be like, you have to come back next session? So we just be like a year behind? Or to start back up and talk about this again? Is that the timing of what it would look like to expand the pilot if you find positive results?
I think we would learn from the pilot because right now, it's 10 lessons, lesson, and it's 30 minutes for the first in-class lesson. Well, all the lessons are about 30 minutes. And the two at the end are in classrooms, so they don't have to walk to the pool. The others are actually getting into the pool and working on some of those 15 competencies that was mentioned earlier. And so in order to do that, even if it's within walking distance for a 30-minute time in the pool, you know, we're also asking, how long does it really take? You know, because I was a second-grade teacher, and I remember taking my students to the pool, but we had to take a bus, and they actually got to go in the water. But there's a lot of preparation ahead of time that you have to do. Kids have to change into their swim gear. You know, you have to get ready. And then when you come back, you know, if it winds wet, you got to change. And so it's not just 30 minutes, you know? It's a lot of instructional time. So we're not sure if this is the best model. If they're going to take time to walk to a pool, maybe it's less than eight sessions, but maybe it's a little bit longer. You know, we're not sure. We're learning about the impact. So to do something that's of the same nature at this time would be kind of replicating what we're trying to do now.
So like your pilot, you would expect to be able to compile the results of what you're doing now, I guess, later this year for possible consideration, whatever you're going to be doing in the future for 2026?
Yes, because we don't know what our findings will be.
That's the timing, though? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 88, HD1, Vice Chair.
Okay, first up, we have the Office of the Attorney General on Zoom with comments. Oh, sorry, in person?
Good morning, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, members, and Horiuchi, Department of the Attorney General. As stated in our testimony, any sports-related travel for student athletes must comply with Title IX as well as HRS Section 302A-461. So in our testimony, we've provided some suggested amendments to the bill that would address those issues. Thank you. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Education with comments.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Teru Shijima, representing the Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Members, we also received one other testimony from Molokai High School Athletics in support, and two individuals also in support, all indicating they would not be joining us. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Chair.
Yep, please state your name and proceed.
My name is Kylie Swan. I am a strong supporter of this measure because I was in part of the Zoom team at Mary's of Pearl Creek High School in Washington State. It would be nice to expand more athletic availabilities in Department of Education. That would be great, and thanks for listening to my testimony. And please let me know if you have any question that you may have. Thank you. Thank you so much to support this bill.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, Representative Lamalao.
It's for the DOE. I just wanted to know what is the projected cost to run this pilot?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
What is the projected cost to run this pilot program? We have...
Hi, Bryce Conacher. I'm the Extracurricular Administrator for the DOE. I'm also the OIA Executive Director. So we asked the funding of last year for both the district that they're... There's Lanai, Molokai, Lahaina Luna, and Hana. The grand total of their travel is $469,225. Now, that includes federal money that Lahaina Luna received last year due to their travel problems that they had, and they had to send kids out to other schools before they could come back. So that was $162,000. So that's differed from this current year. And this also includes current funding that they're already getting from their budgets that they have now, the $2,700 and the $3,772. But I'm just giving you the total funds that they have.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to House Bill 627, HD1, Vice Chair.
First, we have Department of Education in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Dean Uchida with Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association in support. Thank you. Next, we have Ka'ili Swan on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. My name is Kylie Swan. I'm a strong supporter of this bill because school safety is top priority in a DOE setting. Let me talk to you about the incident in a previous school that I attend. A student brought their gun to school and started shooting four students before killing himself in a school cafeteria back in Mary's of Pearl Creek High School, Washington State, in 2014. So this bill usually utilized, like, student safety. If they're in, implement like, school, like, ASH, the ALIS training in a cafeteria, ALIS drills. So when students know what to do, like, there was an active shooting on campus so they can evacuate to the safest place. So please pass this measure. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Members, we also received support from the Department of Law Enforcement and HGEA and one individual who indicated they wouldn't be here. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next bill, House Bill 329, HD2.
First, we have Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, members of the committee. Keith Ayashi, Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The Department stands on its written testimony, which provide comments on this measure. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii School Facilities Authority in support.
Good morning, committee. Ricky Fujitani with the School Facilities Authority. We're a startup agency. What this bill seeks to do is clarify roles and responsibilities so we can move quicker and more efficiently in accomplishing the programs and initiatives that have been assigned to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Attorney General with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members, and Horiuchi from the Attorney General's office. First, with regard to the pre-kindergarten and preschool facilities, we noted that childcare and early learning programs are not on public school campuses, and the DOE does not have jurisdiction or administrative authority over such programs. So we provided suggested amendments to the bill in our testimony. Also, it's not clear from the bill if SFA's responsibility for public school projects related to new or renovated facilities for pre-kindergarten and preschool programs is also meant to include repair and maintenance. So if the intent is to have SFA responsible for repair and maintenance, we've provided suggested amendments. If the intent is to not have SFA responsible for repair and maintenance, we've provided suggested language for that as well. Then as to workforce housing, to clarify that the workforce housing is for educators and education workers in public schools, we provided some suggested language in our testimony. And then finally, with regard to workforce housing, the bill states that SFA shall be responsible for all public school projects related to workforce housing. It's not clear whether or not such housing is, must be on public school property to qualify as public school projects. So we recommend clarifying that the SFA can build workforce housing outside of public school grounds if that's the legislature's intent. Thank you. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Members, we also have testimonies from two organizations and one other individual who indicated they would not be joining us. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. We'll note your comments, AG's comment. Okay, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 636, HD1.
First, we have Department of Education with comments.
Dean Uchida, Department of Education. We stand on our written comments on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Attorney General with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members. In our testimony, we recommend that the bill be clarified to specify that the board that's referenced in subsection C and D of the proposed new section refers to the Board of Education and not, to clarify that it's not possibly referring to the School Facilities Authority Board. So we provided amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii School Facilities Authority in support.
Ricky Fujitani with the School Facilities Authority. Thank you again for hearing this bill. There are two seismic changes going on in Hawaii. You know, the first is the reduction in students. We have fewer students, and it's headed to less than it was in the 1960s. And secondly, as we all know, school choice. And these two factors will result in massive changes in the way we have to deal with schools, how we fund it. So the importance of this initiative is to provide a database that will inform you on how to make these hard choices. More importantly, the data has to be aligned to the decision-makers, which are yourselves. So it has to be aligned where each district, whether House or Senate, can get that information readily to make these key decisions. And that's what this initiative is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Teachers Association in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Sarah Millian-Talaf. And on behalf of HSCA, we're excited by this bill. It's another one of those things, as a teacher, I was kind of surprised didn't exist already. So when I got to my classroom in 2017 at Alima Intermediate, I noticed I have two sinks, and I teach STEM, so we get really messy hands-on learning. And one of the sinks was broken, and it just had never worked. And so I tried to put in a work order, and I was told, "Well, you can't do a work order on this sink because you do have one working sink in the classroom." Well, when I have 35 kids per class, like, we need two sinks. So the idea is, my school was built, was the original Campbell High School, so it was built in the '50s or '60s. Regularly, about five, six times a year, the power goes out, and we just are stuck in the dark. The internet goes out a lot. We know schools like mine are in need of these capital improvement things, but for you to make these informed decisions, you have to know where it's at. You don't know about my sinks until I tell you about my sinks. And we can't have every teacher at the Capitol telling our stories. We should have more. But it's really important that we think about the projects that we're evaluating and making sure those at schools like mine, that are high-need schools, get help first. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also had Department of Budget and Finance with comments and EDP Corporation in support, as well as one individual in support, all indicating they would not be joining us. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Members, questions? Okay, thank you. Vice Chair.
For Department of Education. So your testimony indicates that this would be a duplicated duplication of something that you already have?
Yeah, we're responsible for the repair maintenance of the existing schools. And so we have a way of figuring out what's wrong. We have a system where the schools ask for help in repairing something that might be broken.
Does that have the capability to do some of the other aspects, I think, that SFA is doing? You know, when they talk about being able to plan or give us information about future projects? Or is there any way that that platform can be expanded to include some of this other work? Or how hard would that be for you guys to do?
I need to get back to you on it. I got to go find out what exactly the capabilities of the existing system is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the final bill on this agenda. House Bill 1437, HD1, Vice Chair.
First up, we have Department of Taxation with comments. Thank you. Stands on comments. And we also have Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the committee. This is Jade McMillan. On behalf of...
Oh, we can't hear you?
This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there we go. Okay. I think you're good.
Thank you. Pardon me. Yeah, Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. They submitted some comments on the measure noting that a similar, similar bill was passed in 2022 that was vetoed by Governor Ege. And also, we question why nonprofit schools would be given this treatment unlike other nonprofit organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also received testimony and support from seven other organizations and three individuals indicating they would not be present. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, Members, questions? Okay, thank you very much, Members. We're gonna recess for decision making. We're in recess. Okay, we're gonna reconvene the Committee on Finance for our first agenda. First up, House Bill 133 HD2. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on HB 133 HD2, recommendations to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Grandinetti?
Aye.
Representative Holt? Representative Hasi? Representative Keo Hokapu-Li Loi?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Kush?
Aye.
Representative Nama-Sao? Representative Lee?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa? Representative Templow?
Aye.
Representative Alcos is excused. Representative Reyes Oda?
Aye.
Representative Ward is excused. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 904 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 904 HD1, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting the excused absences of Representatives Alcos and Ward, who will be noted as excused for the RECIP's agenda unless otherwise noted. Are there any reservations? Any notes? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 1065 HD1, as is. Discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 1065 HD1, recommendations pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 429 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 429 HD1, recommendation is to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 754 HD1. We're gonna be amending it by blanking out the appropriation, blanking out the FTE and technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 754 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 624 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 624 HD1, recommendation is to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 637 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 637 HD1, recommendations pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on, House Bill 961 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 961 HD1, recommendations pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, this is very important for the Vice Chair of this bill. Moving on to the next bill. Okay, very, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 962 HD1, as is. Discussion, okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 962 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 683 HD1. We're gonna be amending it by blanking out the FTEs and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 683 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 424 HD1. Members, we're going to, this is a bill that, you know, I think is, we may deal with some of this. Well, this one, I think we're gonna move it forward to just have a vehicle to address the percentages and maybe have a further discussion on that. But, you know, there's money that the Department is requesting for possible shortfalls that we may deal with in the, in the budget. And, and then dealing with the Alice population and things like that. We deal with that in the budget also. So, but, but for now, we're gonna be blanking out the percentage and moving it out with some technical amendments, HD2. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 424 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1293 HD1. Okay, Members, we're gonna be pretty much moving the bill back to the original form before the HD1 and, which is taking into account the SPO's concerns. And that we do have prior concurrence from the previous committee. So HD2, any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 1293 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 987 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 987 HD1, recommendations pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 763 HD3. We're gonna be moving this out as is. And in the committee report, we're gonna put the LRB concerns of there may be a title concern with this bill. It may be a little too narrow. So we'll just put that in the committee report, but we're gonna be passing it out and seeing if they're gonna, subject matter will amend it going forward. Okay? Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 763 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 1234 HD1, as is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 1234 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 88 HD1. Recommendation is to pass it out as is. And then in the committee report, we'll be noting the amendments from the AG that they requested and have subject matter deal with that. There's a lot of moving parts to that. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 88 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 627 HD1, as is. Discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 627 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 329 HD2. We're gonna be, recommendation is to pass it out as is. I do note the DOE's concerns, but in the committee report, we're gonna be putting the AG's concerns in the committee report. Any discussion? Okay?
Voting on HB 329 HD2, recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the second to the last bill, House Bill 636 HD1. We're going to be taking the AG's suggested language, which is technically technical. So passing it out as an HD2. Any discussion? And some other, other technical amendments? Okay? Vice Chair.
Voting on HB 636 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 1437 HD1. We're gonna be moving this out as an HD2, putting in the suggested do tax amendments and, and some technical, other technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1437 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any notes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, Members. Okay, we're gonna recess and then move into our second, I mean, sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn. And then, and then recess for about, well, let's say, half an hour or sooner. But let's say half an hour. Okay, we're in recess. Thank you. Okay, we're in recess. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna convene the committee on finance for our second agenda. A little late. Okay, we're gonna start off with House Bill 750, H.D. two. Vice Chair?
Okay, first up, we have the Department of Health in support.
Hello, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee. Layno Tsu speaking on behalf of Department of Health and we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Available for questions. Thank you.
Next, we have Climate
Next, we have Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Layla Laramie with the Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission. We stand on our testimony in support. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom. Oh, sorry, in person.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Alexis Chapman, testifying on behalf of H F I eight. We stand on our testimony with comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also have six other organizations in support and about ten other individuals all in support who indicated they were not going to join us. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay. Members, any questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1070, uh, sorry, 977, H D one. Vice Chair.
Okay. First up, we have D C C A, Division of Consumer Advocacy, in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Gwena Momo'ala, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
We have Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support.
Aloha Layla Laramie. Stand on our testimony in support. Mahalo.
Thank you. We also have the Public Utilities Commission in support.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Ashley Norman with the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission. We stand on our written testimony available for comment, or for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Holohu Energy LLC on Zoom in support.
Aloha. My name is Ted Peck. I do stand on our written testimony, but I do want to emphasize that it is a loan program. That money comes back to the state. This is the final piece, you know, of, there's a machine that's been built over the last ten years that's highly successful and lauded internationally at being effective at lowering the cost of living for low to medium income residents and driving additional investment for, into the state for those residents. And I'll stay on and available for questions.
Thank you. We have six other organizations and six individuals all in support who are not here today. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 1295, H D one. Vice Chair.
First, we have Public Utilities Commission in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ashley Norman again with the Public Utilities Commission. We stand on our written comments and available for questions and answers. Mahalo.
Okay.
Thank you. We also have Budget and Finance with comments and one individual in support. Is anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 344, H D one.
First, we have Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support.
Aloha. We'll stand on our testimony in support. Thank you. We have the Department of Transportation in support on Zoom.
Not present. We have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Mark Lick for the Energy Office, members of the committee. We support House Bill 344. Stand on our testimony in support and happy to answer any questions you might have.
We have the Disability and Communication Access Board on Zoom in support. The Ulupono Initiative? Okay. Sorry, I just saw them. They weren't checked in on the bill, but, okay, in support. Okay. Members, we also have additional organizations and three individuals all in support. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, any questions? You have a question, Representative Lloy?
Thank you, thank you Chair, for the Energy Office. I just, in support of this bill, and I'm just being very thoughtful of how it's crafted. Oftentimes, we craft bills for current standards, which is charging stations, but there's a lot of innovative technology out there where we have induction charging. Does the words on this bill allow for more innovative solutions that may arise in the future? Or is that something that we need to consider? And I just know that the technology exists.
Yeah, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative, it's a really good point. We point out in our testimony that, you know, even level ones ought to be considered at certain points and other technology, other appropriate technology. We're supposed to be doing studies and working together with D O T support and, you know, with D A G support. So it would behoove this bill to make it as flexible as possible so that we can arrive at the most efficient solutions.
And fall forward as more innovative solutions come about. Great. Thanks. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 242, H D one.
First, we have the Department of Health on Zoom in support.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Noah Klein with the Solid and Hazardous Waste Branch in the Department of Health's Environmental Health Administration. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure, and I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mark Lick for the Energy Office. We do stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Redwood Materials on Zoom in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you very much. Daniel Zotos with Redwood Materials. We've submitted written testimony, but I just wanted to quickly mention we're highly supportive of this legislation. We're also very pleased. We testified in the previous committee, and there was important language added to this proposal that would actually include specialized battery recyclers into the working group. So we're thrilled about that. We're looking forward to working with everyone on this policy, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Members, we have eight additional written comments in support and with comments and one individual also with comments who did not sign up to testify. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1307, H D two.
First, we have the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in support.
Aloha, hualaua, ova'ua, oriana, layal. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department stands in strong support of this measure, which was approved by the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Now we have Ulupono Initiative in support. Sorry.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of Ulupono Initiative will stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Kim in opposition on Zoom. And we also have Nauhine Kaho'o P E in opposition on Zoom. Okay, members, we also have four other organizations in support and about five other individuals in opposition and five, eight other individuals in support. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, Representative Lloy?
I'm, I'm ready to testify on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
Nauhine O P E.
Oh, please, go ahead. Proceed.
In opposition to the $20 million for this project. You should know that there was no beneficiary consultation, which is a condition of the Department of the Interior. There's a conflict of interest with this project. The East Hawaii Commissioner for Hawaiian Homes, Michael Calacini, is also the Director of Punangio Thermal. Some of this project is designated for a residential area in Kauai High. That is environmental racism. If you're gonna put a project like this in a residential area, there's 600 homesteaders in Kauai High. There's also a small retail area of Kauai High, and there are, there's housing along the oceanfront there. In my opinion, this is also corporate welfare. There's $20 million taxpayer dollars for exploration when ORMAD is a $3.8 billion foreign corporation. If they wanna do this, they should be spending their own tax dollars, not ours. My other issue with this is that there's everything, I'm a homesteader. I'm a beneficiary in Hawaiian homelands. Everything goes on Hawaiian homelands except Hawaiians. We have cell towers, shopping malls, car lots, churches, airports, rubbish dumps, wastewater treatment plants, public schools, clinics, wind farms, solar farms, roads to access telescopes, military bases, parks, easements, wealthy ranchers that function as developers but are really, are developers but pass themselves off as ranchers. We have thousands of our homelands leased to ranchers when our own people are waiting on the waitlist and they die on the waitlist. And now you're gonna give us the geothermal project and yet another bait for money to get Hawaiians on Hawaiian homes. How long has this been going on? Twenty-nine hundred, 29,000 homesteaders are still waiting for a place on Hawaiian homes. And now we're gonna use this project as another avenue to try to place Hawaiians when the waitlist should have been cleared long ago. This is greenwashing, and it's at the expense of our homesteaders and our Kanaka families. What happens to the homesteaders who spent their lives waiting for a lease and getting on Hawaiian homelands when their place becomes an environmental disaster and they have to move, like what you have going on in Puna now? If you pay attention to what's happening in Puna, you would know better than to do this to Hawaiians who are living on Hawaiian homelands. Punangio Thermal also has several lawsuits in various stages that you should be aware of, and some of them are headed to the Supreme Court. I find this $20 million investment to be fiduciarily irresponsible when you have that same organization that has several lawsuits pending, one of them headed to the Supreme Court. And finally, I want to say if we're talking about our endangered species, Punangio Thermal has been known to be the number one killer of the Hawaiian hawk. Again, I want to really emphasize what a bad idea this is, even if you don't, Kauai High is only one site. We have also Humma'ula. That area was designated for the last 30 years for placement for ranch, people who are waiting for a ranch lease. If that project goes up at Humma'ula on those Hawaiian, on those lands on Mauna Kea, well, those are legacy lands, all of the people who have been waiting for decades for a ranch lease will not get one. If you're gonna do it in South Point, the homesteaders in South Point have been waiting for 30 years for water. They couldn't get water, but now you're gonna dwell, drill for water for a geothermal project when the homesteaders themselves weren't given the option to have a well drilled for them for water. I'm absolutely opposed to this. Every homesteader I talked to, first of all, didn't know about this because there's no beneficiary consultation. It passed through Hawaiian, the Hawaiian Affairs Committee knowing that there was no beneficiary consultation. And now you're gonna bring it here. If you finance this, I just want you to know that you, it's done without the D O, the D O E, the D O I designation. Hawaiians, homesteaders don't know about it, and you're gonna have a big fight on your hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, Representative Lloy?
Thank you Chair, for the department. And I understand that it went to the commission, but clearly there's a disconnect between the beneficiary consultation piece and the D H H L commission approval of this. Was there beneficiary consultation for this matter?
The department has participated in a few, a number of listening sessions. However, the department hasn't hosted beneficiary consultation sessions. We know that it will continue to be necessary as we go through this process, and we remain open to opportunities available for us to connect with the communities and stakeholders.
Okay, and then the other piece, which is the Department of Interior's approval, where is the department on connecting with D O I?
At this time, D H H L has not consulted with the Department of Interior because, as you may be well aware, the Hawaiian Homes Commission has sole authority concerning land use and zoning for all lands under the jurisdiction of Hawaiian homelands.
That's one interpretation, I think. And I think the beneficiaries have a very different interpretation of that. And these monies. You know what? It's, it's okay. It's okay. Thank you, Chair. I yield.
Thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, moving on to the House Bill 1017, H D one.
We have the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Chair and members, I'm Mary Alice Evans, the Director of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, and will stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. Members, we also received testimony support from D B E D. That's all the testimony we received. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, moving on, House Bill 1020, H D one.
First, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mark Lick on behalf of the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand in strong support of House Bill 1020. An extremely important administration measure to help energy self-sufficiency in the state. We believe the resource characterization work will identify the resources necessary to be able to pursue one of our most important renewable resources, firm renewable resources. And we're also doing it in concert with our own community engagement efforts statewide. So those will happen simultaneously with contracts we already have in place to do so. So happy to answer any questions you might have, but just wanted to voice our strong support for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ulupono Initiative in support.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We strongly support this measure. We really appreciate the, looking into different kinds of viable energy as we look to achieve our 2045 renewable energy goals. And geothermal is a cheap, firm resource that our state can tap into. We also appreciate the community engagement part of this bill that will help foster trust and build relationships with the community as these programs move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members, we also received support from D B E D and one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 734, H D one.
First up, we have Department of Health in support.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. John Nagato on behalf of the Department of Health, the department stands on its written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in support. Thank you. We have the Nature Conservancy in support.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Binishek. I'm representing the Nature Conservancy of I A M Palmyra. Just wanted to highlight that T N C is a nonprofit that's guided by scientists, and our scientists and partners have shown that there's direct evidence of cesspool contamination in our streams and coastal waters at our test sites at Heia, Manalua, Olawalu, Hana, and South Kohala. Therefore, T N C strongly supports any advancement of wastewater infrastructure and best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. We have wastewater alternatives and innovations in support. We have Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Stuart Coleman. I'm the Executive Director of I. And we stand in strong support of this bill. And I'll stand on written testimony, but just want to add that we took advice from the Chair and have worked on a suite of bills, and this is being the top two really make cesspool conversions more affordable for homeowners. And we think this is a great start. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi. My name is Ted Boland. I'm here on behalf of Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. I've been working to upgrade cesspools for so long that when people think of me, they think of cesspools. I was called Cesspool Ted in this committee last year. This bill's a good one because it would enable homeowners to save costs. There are things that are being done in other jurisdictions that could be done here with regard to the Department of Health rules. So this bill would call for the Department of Health to look into that and see if there are ways that they can save money. So, without degrading the water quality. So I hope you'll pass this bill. And I'm available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Access to Sunscreens in support on Zoom. And we also have Coral Reef Alliance in support on Zoom. Okay, members, we have testimony in support from the Mayor of the County of Hawaii and two other organizations, as well as about a dozen individuals, all in support who are not here with us today. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 735, HD2.
First, we have Department of Health with comments. Thank you. And we have the Hanale Initiative in support on Zoom. Joel Guy. We also have testimony in support from Councilmember Addison Bulasun, the Kauai County Housing Agency, and the Mayor of the County of Hawaii, and one, oh, and the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, all in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Vice Chair.
For Department of Health. Hey, thanks. I just had a quick question. The definition in statute about an individual wastewater system, does that, is that only cesspools in HRS?
I'm John Nagato, Department of Health Wastewater Branch. The definition for individual wastewater system is actually in Hawaii Administrative Rules. I was just made to check. But when, in those rules, individual wastewater systems does return, refer to cesspool, septic tanks, aerobic treatment units. It's just that cesspools are an old technology. So in our rules, it's, you can't install a new cesspool.
Sorry, cesspool, septic tanks, and what was the third one?
Aerobic treatment units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions? Representative Lloy.
Thank you, Chair. For DOH again. Department of Health. Thank you. For, there's a couple of things around individual wastewater systems, the five bedrooms and the accessory dwelling unit. And so are we still counting bedrooms at this point? Or are we just taking into account the amount of wastewater that's being generated?
So we're counting bedrooms for residential properties because we equate, each bedroom has two people. Each person creates 100 gallons per day, per person. So five bedrooms. And then individual wastewater systems, by rule, are limited to 1,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
So the bedrooms are the main flow calculation. And then the dwelling issue is like a second level of criteria way back when. I'm not sure why, but they wrote it in as maximum two dwellings. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. And then in addition to dealing with our waste, our residential waste in this manner, we have innovative options within our plumbing code when we're looking at gray water and purple plumbing. I just want to make sure that this bill, again, when we're trying to deal with individual waste in our residential areas, that we have enough flexibility to take on innovative ideas or solutions that actually really reduce the amount of waste or wastewater going into an individual wastewater system.
So are you asking what is being considered for gray water?
For gray water.
Yes, so gray water does decrease the amount of total wastewater going into an individual wastewater system or if it was connected to the sewer system. But something still needs to treat that gray water in order for you to reuse that gray water or dispose that gray water. We do have guidelines for residential gray water reuse, but in order to oxidize the gray water to make it safe for subsurface drip irrigation, it needs to go into another tank. And that currently, that tank is almost similar to a septic tank. You need to give it some time. So it doesn't really save on space, but it does give people another option to reduce water. So that's the, that's the argument with gray water.
Right. The water consumption, yeah. Water consumption. Consumption of potable water. I think it's around the corner. I think.
There are technologies to, to treat gray water, but we have to write those into rules because those technologies, sorry to get off topic, but those technologies are, need to fit our rules for recycle water. So subsurface is fine. It goes under the ground. Nobody touches it. It's above the ground that we want to make sure people don't get sick.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Moving on to House Bill 736, HD1.
We have the University of Hawaii System in support on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. My name is Tao Yan, on behalf of University of Hawaii Water Resource Research Center. I will stand on the written testimony in strong support, and it will be available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Health in support. Thank you. We have Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support. Thank you. Department of Hawaiian Homelands in support. Thank you. Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. Stuart Coleman from I. I'll stand on my written testimony, but do want to add this was a continuation of a program that existed very successfully. Dr. Roger Babcock ran this for a number of years. And what it does is just streamlines introduction of new technology, which we hope will be more affordable. And so it works with the Department of Engineering, and WRRC will, will manage it to help those companies come in. The benefit also is that it's self-sustaining because the companies pay for the testing. So it'll be bringing money into the state and new technology. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Nature Conservancy in support. Thank you. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Ted Boland for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. I think Stuart Coleman has described this accurately. It's a program that would save people money by allowing more expeditious approval of new technologies. And we need to get in some new technologies that are less expensive than what's out there now. So this is really key, and I hope you'll pass this bill. Available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have public access to sunscreens in support on Zoom. Lynn Mia Hira, present. And Coral Reef Alliance, Erica Perez, on Zoom in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony. Erica Perez with the Coral Reef Alliance.
Thank you. Members, we also have testimony in support from Mayor Alameda, the County of Hawaii, two other organizations, and 12 individuals, all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 749, HD1.
First, we have University of Hawaii System in support on Zoom.
Hi, Melanie Lander for Hawaii Sea Grant. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission in support. Thank you. Department of Health in support. Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support. Thank you. Nature Conservancy in support. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Ted Boland for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Just to explain what this bill is about for those who don't know. The Department of Health faces a huge job in administering a program to upgrade cesspools. There's 83,000 cesspools in the state. They're supposed to be upgraded by 2050. The Department of Health needs some resources to get started on this, and a separate cesspool conversion section within the Department of Health Wastewater Branch would really help. So this is just three positions, and I hope the committee will approve it to get started on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have public access to sunscreens. Lynn Mia Hira on Zoom. Still not, still not present. Coral Reef Alliance, Erica Perez, on Zoom in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. We stand in strong support of this bill. I was a member of the Cesspool Conversion Working Group and have been fighting along many people in the room today to remove and upgrade cesspools across our state. It is a challenge on many levels, one being a human capacity level within the state. We strongly support this and adding capacity to be able to expedite our cesspool conversion or meet our 2050 goal. Any support that offers cesspool conversion is an effort in securing our coral reefs. Our coral reefs across our, across our state are dying and severely impacted by the sewage contamination coming from failed infrastructure and cesspools. This would be a step in the right direction of replacing those.
Thank you. Members, we have testimony in support from Mayor Alameda, four other organizations, and about 11 individuals. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Question, members? Moving on, Representative Kush.
For Department of Health. Got to sit closer, I think. Thank you. About how many, well, overall, how many wastewater, individual wastewater permits does Department of Health process annually statewide? Do you know? Ballpark?
I think it's in, like, 10 to 15 a day. Letters, approval.
So 3,000 to 5,000 a year, say?
No, no, no. And I think we're in the hundreds. I mean, I'm talking like approvals to construct and then approval. We're not nowhere near the, the amount. If you take the 85,000 and divide by how many, 24 years?
Yeah, no, no, that's just where I'm getting at. I see. So I'm trying to get a scale. Like, do you guys do 5,000? Do you do 500?
I think it's in the hundreds, yeah, the 500. Building permits are like in the 5,000. I don't have it off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
But yeah, we're not nowhere near the rate that you need to be.
Okay. And about how many, do you know how many staff kind of handles that? Like, I know in Hilo, there's a couple people.
We have, I have five or six engineers reviewing plans, but they also review building permits that are associated with those plans. And that's just to convert. We don't have anybody that runs the grant program, so I had to scrounge for people to double duty, triple duty. And then there's all the kind of questions that constantly come in just about conversions. That's normal for IWS is, but with the, we have a lot of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the last bill on cesspools, House Bill 879, HD1.
All right. Department of Health in support. Department of Hawaiian Homelands in support. Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support. Nature Conservancy. Oh, sorry. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support. Thank you. Public access to sunscreens on Zoom in support. Coral Reef Alliance on Zoom in support.
Aloha. We stand in support on our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, about three other organizations and about 13 individuals, all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, Department of Health.
So, you know, I've always had concerns about conversion of this. And at the end of the day, right? So we're, the concern is cesspools that are, you know, not working to the level, you know, that we need. But what many are converting to is septic tanks. And now there's other technologies that they're moving towards. At the end of the day, because the, right? It's EPA that requires large cesspool conversions, and then it's the state that has put it on the individual ones, the smaller ones. At some point in time, EPA might, may come up with different standards or things like that. So is it possible that what we are asking everybody to convert to will not meet that requirement?
If it's possible, if somebody does a study to determine like they did with the cesspools, that they could trace the.
So we're, so many are converting, in some cases, $20,000 to $50,000. And at the end of the day, the Department of Health cannot guarantee that this will be the be-all, end-all?
Personally, if I'm speaking for the department, no, I can't guarantee that.
Okay. So my, my other concern is that your department, not your division, is in the budget asking us for $3 million to convert cesspools at Kalapapa. And when I asked them, why were, why are you putting this in the budget? They said it's because of a state mandate, right? But at the end of the day, these cesspools have very little impact into the environment because they're not being used. But yet we have to put up $3 million that we could be using for other purposes. So this broad mandate is having unintended consequence where we are the state having to pay for things that are not necessarily strategic going forward. I've always been of the mind that what we should do, instead of a date and a mandate, is that we should identify where the problems are and in the areas that obviously cannot put a wastewater system in, then you have to come up with alternatives. But where we can, we should put what in. Because, you know, there are bills that we are, we have gone through and we are going to be hearing that are trying to increase density in bedrooms, different areas, that will, at some point, cause other problems for us when you're increasing density without a master plan. And it would be my guess that way back when, when they were building housing, somebody probably said, well, you know, at some point, you're increasing density. Maybe we should build a wastewater system. And they said, well, we actually need housing, so we'll just add more. And they said, well, we actually need housing, so we'll just add more cesspools. And then fast forward today, now we have a problem, right? So these problems were created by approvals that were done in maybe in part by the state, but in large part because the county controls zoning and planning by the counties. And at the end of the day, wastewater is a county responsibility. And so I've always believed that it should be them that is leading this and not us. And it should be you pressing them to do what they're supposed to do. And you know, protect what we need to protect. You have any comment on that?
So we do take that seriously, what you're saying about communicating that to the counties. I mean, I understand, I take that stance even when we read our regulations. The priority for which treatment you choose should start with a regional treatment facility. And if that's not possible and it makes sense.
Again, it's my concern that, one, we cannot guarantee that this conversion will be the be all, end all. And two, it's not a strategic plan.
And the counties are saying, I mean, we just met with them two weeks ago. I had them all in the room from the different county wastewater departments to not only mostly focus on cesspools, but it led back into even their struggles with everything.
So, so is this, this arbitrary mandate to 2050, is it something we should reconsider?
I don't know if it's for me to say.
Being that you cannot guarantee that this is the be all, end all, should it be something that we reconsider?
I mean, I think there's two parts to it. I think the cesspools, we can't deny are a bad thing. But I think you're, you're talking about what technologies should be required that could be considered in a revision to the act rather than just getting rid of them.
Yeah, you don't want to answer the question. Okay, so. Okay, so my, my other concern is how we're paying for these wastewater systems, right? So when we start putting in these smaller systems and then they are paid for by a group that is, you know, everybody got to contribute and pay for it through fees or whatever. Then it, it brings up a bigger picture problem for me. So I have brought this up to Mayor Blangiari. And actually, I brought it up to the previous mayor also. That when they went through the consent decree with Honolulu and they were required to put in the new system, that they are paying for this system through increased sewer fees. The problem with that is when you pay for it through sewer fees, then it's based on use. And then also if at some point the federal government raises the $10,000 cap on the salt deductions. And if it was paid for on property tax, right, the user's going to pay either way. If they pay for it increased fees, it's not deductible on their federal income tax. If they paid for it in increased property tax, they could deduct it on their federal income tax. That's point number one. Point number two, because it's based on use. And in Honolulu, it is nearing 30% of the properties owned in the state of Hawaii are owned by people from out of state. In many cases, they are part-time residents that are here during the winter months. So it is my assumption that nine months out of the year, they're not going to be using water and wastewater. So the bulk of that improvement will be burdened on people that live and work here. So putting on fees is not a good way to pay for these systems. Now, going forward, to my point earlier, if the county doesn't lead it and put it on property tax, then the burden always comes down to the people of the state. So financially, we have to think about this. And strategically, how of this mandate, and because we cannot guarantee that this is the be all, end all, we have to really start thinking this through. Do you agree?
There's a lot to that, yeah. I mean, I I mean, I agree, this is a gigantic problem beyond just the state.
Okay, you know, and we're not going to solve this overnight. We're not going to solve this in this committee right now. But, but I wanted to take this opportunity with all these bills that we are hearing to make those points. Because at the end of the day, I think it's something we need to do. But it has to be well thought out, how we pay for it and strategically how we prioritize where we do. And, and an arbitrary mandate date is very problematic. I would suggest that the department come up with a plan or something to be more strategic. Because this is things that, because of all the things I've stated, can put the burden on local people. Right? And at the end of the day, when Congress gave the authority to the counties to take care of wastewater, it was never intended for the individual to pay. Once cesspools were supposed to be interim form of wastewater until you had critical mass, then you were supposed to build a system and it was supposed to be paid by the municipalities. But this is not happening. So fast forward, we have to keep all those things in mind and think it through, is my point. Okay. Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, go ahead. Representative Hesse.
Mr. Coleman. Want to give the gentleman from DOH a little bit of a break? So I wonder if you could share kind of your perspective on, on the impact of cesspools?
Yes, thank you. Rep, we appreciate it. The cesspools, we were able to go to the only other island in the country that has more cesspools than Hawaii. Does anybody know what that is?
Long Island.
Long Island, yes. They have 400,000 of them. And they, they invited us there because they wanted to show us the impact that these cesspools have. Their drinking water has been contaminated and they have the highest rates of nitrogen in their drinking water. And that's been associated with elevated rates of cancer. And they have like massive fish die-offs and toxic algal blooms. And when I went there, I said, I hope you don't mind, like, I'm a writer, I'm going to have to tell this, you know? And he's like, no, you should. He's like, do it and tell them before it's too late. We waited. So now they have a program where they convert all these things. So along with the health issues and the drinking water contamination, probably one of the biggest issues that's been really thoroughly documented is the degradation of the coral reefs. And so, you know, these coral reefs bring in literally, it's a number of studies have shown over $100 million a year in value when it comes to tourism, recreation, diving, seafood. And so in certain areas like Maualai'a, Maui, Puakau, and then just around the whole state, the coral reefs have been so degraded by these nutrients from cesspools that they're like destroyed. So in both Puakau and Maualai'a, they went from like 80% coverage to about 7% or 8%. And they can't even do coral reef restoration. So that has an economic bottom line for the state because people come here, you know, for our reefs and our ecosystems. If there are no reefs, the fish start to go away. And it's our protection against storms and hurricanes, flooding and that kind of thing. So it has a real economic, environmental, and human health aspect. Did that, was that, yeah?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, Members? Representative Kush.
For the gentleman behind you, I'm sorry, I forgot your name from, with a rad shirt. Cesspool Ted, yes. God, how could I forget?
Thank you, Representative.
I just wanted, in the same genre of Representative Hesse, to maybe talk about the other side of reef health and what might be a very cost-effective approach to maintaining health of reefs that are impacted by current, you know, nitrate flows. Could you bestow that information?
The question is, what would be a cost-effective way to deal with that?
Yeah, one of the ways.
Yeah. Basically, you need to, you need to get the nitrates out of the flow because
I'm talking about the fish.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
Herbivores.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Our conversation earlier.
I will talk about that, yes.
Sorry.
The study that was in Nature last year indicated that two things are contributing to the decline of reefs other than climate change, which is huge. And that is wastewater, which includes nitrates, and the diminution of herbivore fish, which clean the reef. They, they, they cut the, we call them lawn mowers of the sea because they clean the algae off the reefs. The algae is fertilized by wastewater and it smothers the reefs and kills them. So it's very important to have both less wastewater coming into the, with nitrates coming into the water and to maintain the supplies of herbivore fish, which Onahuahua are severely depleted and everywhere are important for the reefs of Hawaii.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to educate the committee here on the importance of those and how maybe fishing regulations, which are very cheap to implement, might be a great tool to stretch us through 2050.
Yeah, and I would say it's not an either or. You want to do both things or you're going to have a problem with the reefs, which our life depends upon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, Members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 974-HD1.
First, we have DCCA, Division of Consumer Advocacy, in, with comments.
Newer Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Michelangelo, Executive Director, Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Attorney General's Office on Zoom with comments. Oh, in person with comments.
Good afternoon. Deputy Attorney General Randall Nishiyama. We've submitted our written comments and are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have the PUC in support. Thank you. Long Road Energy in support on Zoom. Ren West, oh, in person? Thank you. Ulupono Initiative in support. Hawaii Electric in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Rebecca Dehef Matsushima. On behalf of Hawaii Electric, in strong support of this bill. This bill will help our, our customers by allowing us to enter into power purchase agreements. Without this bill, developers have told us with our current credit rating, either prices will be significantly increased to account for their higher cost of financing or they just will not be able to obtain financing. This bill was amended in HD1. It makes it very clear that no state funds and the state treasury cannot be used to support this bill. It uses existing revenues from customers that the state would just take in trust to be able to pay the IPPs in the event the utility cannot. I want to make very clear that we do not intend to ever have to have the state step in. And, you know, these mechanisms already exist to be able to pay the IPPs back. However, just having the bill provides the financing parties of the developers the insurance, assurance that they need that payment will be made and so that they can provide financing under the bill. I know that the Attorney General has raised concerns with the reserve fund. And I just want to note that we did have amendments in HD1 to try to make it clear that the utility would not have access to that reserve fund. We can make that clearer. We're fine to put in the bill exactly that the utility cannot use the reserve fund. The intent is that it's there for the state to be able to use in the event of an under recovery since there is no use of state treasury funds under the bill. Happy to answer any questions on, on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Clearway Energy Group in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Nicola Park on behalf of Clearway Energy. We do stand on our written testimony. I just wanted to note, we do propose a few amendments, specific language changes to the bill. We also reviewed Hawaii Electric's proposed amendments to the bill and we're in support of those. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. AES Hawaii in support.
Aloha Chair and Committee Members. Eliza Talbot with AES Hawaii. We stand in strong support and we proposed amendments as well and also support ECO's amendments. We also have our chief counsel on the Zoom if there is, if there are detailed questions about financing or the text of the bill that we need to get into today. Thank you.
Okay, we also have comments from Department of Budget Finance, five other organizations in support, and one individual in support. Did not sign up to testify. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, Members? Really? Okay. We're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 982-HD2.
We have the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Director Ando or her designee, in, with comments. DCCA, Division of Consumer Advocacy with comments. We have the Hawaii Public Housing Authority with comments. Oh, sorry. Director Ando? Sorry, we passed you, but if you'd like to elaborate on any of your comments? Okay, thank you. Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation with comments. Thank you. Attorney General with comments.
Deputy Attorney General Randall Nishiyama. We've submitted our written comments and are available for questioning.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. Daniel Park for the Public Utilities Commission. We've submitted our written comments and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. AES Hawaii in support. Thank you. Kawai Island Utility Cooperative with comments on Zoom. Kaala Farm with, in support on Zoom. Clearway Energy Group in support. Hawaii Association for Justice in opposition.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Evanoye on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Justice. You have a written testimony in opposition. I just wanted to summarize a few of our main points. You know, our primary concern is, of course, the liability caps that are imposed, you know, for those who reject offers from, you know, this wildfire relief fund. We find that, you know, that's bad public policy and, you know, really undercuts the rights of victims who, of, you know, any kind of future wildfires that may occur. You know, so we do want to emphasize that point. Our second main point is going to be, of course, you know, there's a substantial amount of authority given to the executive director of this fund without clear parameters, you know, especially in regards to, you know, right requirements or criteria for what offers or guidelines for offers in that sense. And, you know, we were kind of recommending the utilization of an executive committee instead to really spread that out and have a little bit more parameters provided for within the bill. And then our last one, you know, main point of emphasis would be, you know, there's a, there's some unclear and, you know, lack of clarity in regards to, you know, the process for damages exceeding the obligated amounts. And we were just, we're recommending some changes in that regard to, you know, really help, you know, should the fund amount be exceeded or, you know, in those instances, we just want to make sure that it's clearly identified within the bill. So, you know, I appreciate the committee allowing me to testify. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Charter Communications with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. Rebecca Lieberman from Charter Spectra.
Rebecca Lieberman from Charter Spectrum, standing on my written testimony. Available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Hawaiian Electric in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Jason Ben, Senior Vice President for Hawaiian Electric. I'm testifying in strong support of the original version of HB 982 and expressing some concerns with the HD2 version as it relates to the $500 million contribution by Hawaiian Electric shareholders and other issues as outlined in my written testimony. I also want to note that we have no objection to removing Sections 4 and 5 as relates to special purpose revenue bonds. This bill is in the public interest. It protects both the people of Hawaii and our economy from the risk of catastrophic wildfires in the future, despite immense and continuing efforts by Hawaiian Electric and many others to reduce wildfire risk. No one should assume the risk is zero, and we must act now. I want to emphasize that the bill is forward-looking, and I want to make clear our company's commitment to pay its $2 billion share of the global settlement with no contribution from customers. The HD2 requirement for an additional $500 million is simply not feasible and would delay or prevent the fund from operating and thereby negating its benefits. Comparisons to California on this issue are out of context for many reasons and not apples to apples. In California, utility customers are paying for claims from past fires, claims for future fires up to $1 billion, and contributing to the wildfire fund. So as designed, the original bill balances the interests of many and achieves three key objectives. It protects property owners, renters, insurers, and the economy. It protects customers from cost increases related to the utility's exposure to unlimited wildfire liability, and it preserves accountability. Our concern is that HD2 amendments unbalance these objectives and are likely to prevent or delay its implementation. So just to make clear, utilities must serve despite risk factors that are not all within their control. And simply put, unbounded wildfire liability risks results in bad credit, high cost of capital, which in turn leads to higher costs to customers. And this is at a time when we need to make critical infrastructure improvements to address safety, reliability, resiliency, and to meet the energy policy objectives of the state of Hawaii. So prior to August 8th, Hawaiian Electric's credit rating was A minus. Our current credit rating is non-investment grade, speculative, and the lowest in the U.S. amongst regulated utilities. This bill is critical to begin the process of returning to investment grade and reducing costs to customers. So I ask that you please pass HB 982 with modifications to restore the original language regarding shareholder contribution and allow time for further discussion on the issues. Mahalo for allowing me to testify, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ulupono Initiative in support. And we have IBW Local 1260 in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Kiko Bukowski, on behalf of IBW 1260. We stand on our written testimony in strong support with some, with some amendments, but we just wanted to reemphasize the importance of this measure to our union and to our members. We, we strongly support any effort to maintain the viability of our electric utility. We are the representatives of the collective bargaining units of all electric utility workers throughout the state, and we will be directly impacted depending on the outcome of this measure. We do want to also emphasize that we strongly believe that this measure is a, is a needed step in improving the credit rating of our utilities so that we can maintain the lowest cost possible to the ratepayers. So we appreciate your efforts in this, in this direction. Thank you very much.
Members, we have numerous other organizations offering comments or in support, as well as twenty-some-odd individuals mostly in support, one with comments, not indicating they would be here to testify. Anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Hi, this is Cody Sula.
Oh, hi. Could you repeat your name and then proceed with your testimony?
Hi, aloha. My name is Cody Sula with the Iron Workers Stabilization Fund. We submitted written testimony, and we stand on our written testimony. Just wanted to add a few comments. We believe that this bill is really important, you know, given the catastrophic wildfire in Maui. And we believe that it warrants the conversation going further. Nobody wants rates to increase. It's already hard enough for us here and for the, with the cost of living, but we do need to mitigate the risks. So we just asked you guys to continue the conversation, make sure it's done correctly. But we can't keep the can down the road anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Members, any questions? We're gonna, at this point, we're gonna recess till 2 o'clock, and then we'll come back for decision-making and move right into the next agenda. Please sit.
We're going to reconvene the Committee on Finance for our second agenda, decision making on our second agenda. First up is House Bill 750, H D two, recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on H B seven five zero, H D two, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Grandinetti.
Aye.
Representative Holt.
Aye.
Representative Hussey.
Aye.
Representative Keo Hokapu Leloi.
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Representative Lama Sau. Representative Lee.
Aye.
Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa. Representative Templo.
Aye.
Representative Alcos is excused. Representative Reyes Oda.
Aye.
Representative Ward is excused. Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to next bill, House Bill nine seven seven, H D one, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B nine seven seven, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting the excused absences of Representatives Alcos and Ward, who will remain excused for the rest of the agenda unless otherwise noted, any reservations, any knows. Chair recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill twelve ninety five, H D one. Members, this bill, you know, was a good idea, but in light of what's happening at the federal level, we're not sure if it's going to be around. But I'd like to keep it moving. We are going to amend it by saying that if we do have projects that we can fund with direct pay from the federal level, that we disallow any government projects. And the idea of that, disallow any government project from the state tax credit. And the idea of that is that instead of using the credit, because it's our own project or government projects, that we fund it with a bond and that we pay for power over time instead of a tax credit, where we're paying for power from the front end. So that's my recommendation and some technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on H B twelve ninety five, H D one, recommendation is to pass with amendments, any reservations, any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill three forty four, H D one, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B three four four, H D one, recommendation is to pass as is. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill two four two, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B two four two, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill thirteen oh seven, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B thirteen oh seven.
I'm sorry. I did have a discussion, sorry.
Okay, please proceed.
The D H H L was established in nineteen twenty one by Congress with the Hawaiian Homes Act. D H H L's value statement states, "Administrations going forward will be prepared to work side by side with beneficiaries to create and maintain vibrant homestead communities." D H H L's website also states that the trust has a finite amount of land and resources. Since the land is not infinite, the resources should be used to substantially clear the forty thousand applicants from the waitlist. For these reasons, I will vote no.
Okay, thank you very much, members. Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to be moving this forward. Any kind of major change to the bill has to be done with by subject matter. Our purview is just money. So at this point, we're going to keep it moving forward for discussion. Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on H B one three zero seven, H D two, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Noting the no vote of Representative Reyes Oda, any other knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill ten seventeen, H D one, as is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on H B ten seventeen, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill ten twenty, H D one, as is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on H B ten twenty, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill seven thirty four, H D one, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B seven three four, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill seven thirty five, H D two, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B seven three five, H D two, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill seven thirty six, H D one, as is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on H B seven three six, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill seven forty nine, H D one, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B seven four nine, H D one, recommendation is to pass as is. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, House Bill eight seventy nine, H D one, as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Voting on H B eight seven nine, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, is there any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill nine seventy four, H D one, as is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on H B nine seven four, H D one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to House Bill nine eighty two, H D two. Members, we're going to be amending this bill to blank out the mention of the five hundred thousand from the customers and the shareholders, blanking both of them out. And then also deleting any reference to, I think it's in section four and five, to the SPURBs and then technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Going.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We're blanking it, right? It'll be clear, we're blanking the money amounts, five hundred thousand each one. And but what we're deleting is the SPURB language in two sections. Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on H B nine eight two, H D two, recommendation is to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned. We're going to clear the room and then move on to our third agenda. Okay, we're going to convene our Committee on Finance on our two o'clock agenda. First up is House Bill 307, HD1. Vice Chair.
We have testimony in support from Protekaho Olave Ohana.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanuchi. My name is Ko'lu Lu'uai. I am part of the Lu'uai Ohana that practices generational kuleana over kaho olave. And I am here in support of HB 307 to supply or to create special numbered plates for the, to recognize the Protekaho Olave Ohana and the alohaaina movement in Hawaii. And we stand on our written testimony today, but I'm available for any questions.
Very good.
Thank you. Also, three other organizations all in support and 21 individuals all in support who did not say they would be joining us. Anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, we'll open up the questions. You did a good job. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 531, HD1. Vice Chair.
First, we have the University of Hawaii System, Dr. Uweno.
Dear Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Member, I'm Naoto Uweno. I'm the Director of University Hawaii Cancer Center. We stand on this testimony to support a special license for the University Hawaii Cancer Center. The most important part is really, I mean, of course, getting money is important, but more importantly, 40% of us in this room will have cancer or had cancer. And it is important that University Hawaii Cancer Center stands for research and clinical care and clinical trials. Unfortunately, not everybody knows what we do, and I think this is a great opportunity to really increasing awareness to the community. And we, so therefore, we love this bill, so I'd like to have your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. Cynthia Al, on behalf of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, or ACS CAN, this year, more than 9,000 people in Hawaii will be diagnosed, newly diagnosed with cancer, and over 2,000 will pass from the disease. UH Cancer Center is the only NCI-designated cancer center in the Pacific region and considered the top 4% of cancer centers in the US. Specialty plates will allow supporters of the cancer center to publicly support them. So thank you so much, and we hope that this can also create additional funds for the cancer center. Thank you.
Thank you. One other organization in support and an individual also in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to the next bill, House Bill 1025, HD1.
First up, we have DEBED, Director Tokioka or his designee on Zoom, in person.
Actually, in person. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Dennis Ling, on behalf of DEBED, DEBED stands in support of this measure and stands by our written testimony. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. We also have testimony in support from the East West Center and the East West Center Employees Association, who are not present, but anyone else wishing to testify in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Dennis. You know, just, I think, you know, a lot of the things you're working on and doing are very laudable, but I think at the same time, I think we, because many of our members are new, if you want to explain what you're doing here and trying to accomplish.
Through this East West Center bill, we are trying to exempt the East West Center from getting regular funding from the state. Otherwise, they would have to go through the 42F process, which is the GIA process. But because of the heritage and the reputation of the East West Center, we feel that they serve a public purpose, and therefore, having, not going through the 42F process, they have regular funding. And I think this is the only organization that has requested such consideration.
Okay. Yeah, we've done it with the Iolani Palace and Bishop Museum, something.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, that's true.
That's true. Right, okay. Okay, members, any other questions? Okay, Vice Chair, we'll move on to the next bill. Thank you, Dennis. Move on to the next bill, sorry, House Bill 110, HD1.
First up, we have the Department of Agriculture in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Here for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We will stand on our written testimony in support.
We also have Department of Education with comments, County of Kauai, and Mayor Alameda in support, Hawaii Cattlemen's Council and Hawaii Food and Policy in support, as well as one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1365, HD1.
First up, Department of Agriculture in support.
Chair, Members of the Committee, Cedric Gates, on behalf of the Department of Agriculture, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Also, Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. Chair, our apologies, it failed to include in our testimony that the estimated cost for the hydrological studies for each one of the two aquifers is roughly $1.5 million. Again, we're hoping that EIS may not be necessary, and it may just be an EA, which would put the price tag down to half a million dollars. But again, just to be careful and prudent, we are going to request, or we are requesting $1.5 million. Again, this is for the partner of our farmers, and it is Department of Ag Park Land and actually DHHL. It's the two different land owners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. We also have Department of Hawaiian Homeland in support, six other organizations and five individuals all in support. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next bill, House Bill 428, HD1.
Department of Agriculture in support.
Well, the department stands on its written testimony in support.
We have the Maui Food Bank in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Lisa Paulson, CEO of the Maui Food Bank. I stand on my testimony in strong support of HB 428, noting the benefits to both our community and the economy by strengthening our food supply chain, supporting local farmers, and enhancing nutritional access for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Hunger Action Network in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Geneva Mama Hawaii Hunger Action Network, and we would like to express strong support for HB 428. This funding for the Farm to Families program would boost our local economy and set up our communities to receive fresh local food during blue skies and, most importantly, emergencies. We saw how the Maui wildfires actually led to a spike in food insecurity, as much as 49% of Maui's population. And it was the food banks and distribution partners who stepped in that have historically relied on just charitable contributions. They're already doing amazing work in this space, so gaining the funding would be extremely impactful. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Food Industry Association in support on Zoom. We have the Hawaii Food Bank in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Amy Miller. I'm the President and CEO of Hawaii Food Bank. We are here, thank you for the opportunity to testify today, in strong support of this measure. Hawaii Food Bank serves the islands of Oahu and Kauai. Last year, we provided food for more than 18, almost 18 million meals through a network of about 225 agencies on the ground, making sure our communities get enough safe and healthy food. This included almost 6 million pounds of fresh produce. I want to just take a quick minute just to say what we're seeing out in the community right now. We released a food insecurity report last year and found that 30% of Hawaii households are food insecure, meaning they don't have enough food for everyone in the household to live a healthy, active life. 10% of our households are going without food for full days, some are most months of the year. 6% of our children are going without food for whole days. We are now serving almost, I'm sorry, 171,000 people on average per month across islands of Oahu and Kauai. That's more than twice as many people as we were serving prior to the pandemic, and a 15% increase just from last year. The people that we're seeing that are showing up, many of them have never had to ask for help before. These are folks that are working one, two, sometimes three jobs, and they just can't make ends meet anymore. Less, about a third of the people that we serve receive benefits of some kind, so the majority of people we're serving don't, they make too much money to get access to benefits. So the Food Bank Network might be the only place that they can get healthy food. This is such an important bill because it not only provides funding to purchase healthy food, but it also, every dollar goes right back into our local economy. We are in very strong support and happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We have Tyler Anchetta in support.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanuchi, and Members of the Committee. My name is Tyler Anchetta, and I am in strong support of the Farm to Families Bill, HB 428. I'm a recent graduate of UH Hilo with a degree in business marketing. Last year, I was hired at the Food Basket as a community engagement specialist. It means a lot to work for an organization that invests in local people like me. They have given me an opportunity to do meaningful work for Hawaii Island communities. Next week, I get to distribute 100 pounds of poi that we purchased from Mokuva Piko Poi, a small business in Waipio Valley. We're using the poi for our Nakuke Opio cooking class next week in Kau, where access to fresh local food is really limited. This is just one small example of how the Food Basket supports local farmers and makes sure healthy food reaches families who need it most. The Farm to Families Bill would help us do even more. More local food going to more local families, more money staying in our communities, and more opportunities for small farms to grow. I hope you'll support it. Mahalo for your time.
We also had testimony in support from the Food Basket, Hawaii Islands Food Bank in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. I'm Kristin Frost Albrecht. I'm the Executive Director of the Food Basket Hawaii Islands Food Bank. I know some of you here. It's fun to see our residents in action, and you guys have been so supportive. And Chair, it's good to see you again, too. We, I have a special place in my heart for this committee because you helped to fund the BUCKS, Double Up Food Bucks Program, which is a program that we administer. And what Tyler just showed you, those poi pops, they go for $3 at the store, but if you use the BUCKS, you get half off. We have a very strong mission to end hunger in our community. And in order to do that, we've been, over the years, working hard to meet immediate hunger right at our door, right? People are hungry right now. But we've also been working hard at the root causes of hunger, and that's why we do programs like the BUCKS. That's why we support our local farmers through our JBOX program, which is a community-supported agriculture program that's been running since 2014. We have been through four federally-declared disasters since 2014. We have served in every single one of those, all of our residents who needed the help. And the lesson it has taught us is that we cannot count on food from 2,500 miles away. It doesn't make any sense. During the pandemic, our numbers went from 14,000 served a month to 85,000, sixfold. It was an incredible heavy lift, and we would not have been able to meet the need had it not been for our agricultural producers, our ranchers, our fishermen, our, you know, local produce folks. It took an army, quite literally, to meet that need. I understand that this bill, the Farm to Families Bill, is actually based on the Bridges Program, which was the brainchild of Senator Tim Richards. And I have been begging him every year since, could you not make this a permanent program? Because it meant so much to us as a food bank, to the residents that we serve, as well as to our producers. If we have food security on our island, if we're actually able to feed our people, we'll be okay. And the disasters aren't going away. So thank you so much for hearing us. I wanted to also point out, we have nine members of our team here for Ag Day. They are the most amazing people that I can, you got to meet Tyler, but they're, each one of them passionate about what we do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We also have Chelsea Takahashi in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Chelsea Takahashi. I'm in strong support of the Farm to Families Bill. I had the pleasure of working for the Food Basket, Hawaii Islands Food Bank, for the last nine years, and I'm very proud to have played a role in building our capacity to support local farmers through our many programs, including Mulamata Farmer, the BUCKS, the Box, Nakukio Pio Cocoa Harvest, and Kapuna Fresh, just to name a few. We have been building demand for local food by local people, and we have been building relationships with our Hawaii Island farmers, food hubs, and food retailers. So I just want to affirm my testimony to this bill that will allow us to increase and scale up our local food purchasing to meet the needs of Hawaii Island food insecure residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Lauren Nelson in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Lauren Nelson. I'm the Food Access Coordinator with the Maui County Department of Agriculture. The Farm to Families Bill is essential to support our farmers and our local families' food and nutrition security. During COVID and more recently with the Maui fires, we saw farmers lose over 70% of their businesses overnight. Bill 428 would provide farmers with a consistent market, forming essential connections and a sourcing framework that can be scaled up in response to emergencies. At a time when one in three Hawaii households face food insecurity, when most farmers are seeking additional markets, this bill would provide essential protections to residents' health and to the economic viability of our ag sector. We share our strong support for HB 428. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Just also want to note, we have numerous pieces of testimony in support from organizations and many, many individuals. If any of them are here in the room today and would like to testify, please come forward. Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 496, HD2. Vice Chair.
First up, Department of Agriculture in support.
Chair, the department stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
We also have testimony in support from Hawaii Cattlemen's Council and two individuals. Anybody else wishing to testify in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 534, HD2. Vice Chair.
Department of Agriculture with comments.
Chair, the Department of Agriculture stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Department of Land and Natural Resources in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Brian Nielsen, Administrator for Division of Aquatic Resources. We stand We stand on our written testimony in support. Happy to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
And Hawaii Longline Association in support?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members. Eric Kingma, Executive Director of the Hawaii Longline Association. I believe the majority of people in our community, Hawaii community, support this bill. There's been a lot of media coverage, and really intent is to provide consumers information and let them choose. Provide the origin of the ahi, and they can have more information, because it's really important to know the origin of your seafood. Not all seafood is harvested the same, and now we've seen a proliferation of lower-grade, imported, previously frozen, gas-treated, added, included, sort of adulterated poke products in Hawaii marketplaces with no origin. And this bill wouldn't prevent, you know, that, those products from coming in, it's just provide consumers more information. I just wanted to make a comment in a couple of bills ago about the Farm to Families Program. The Hawaii Longline Association is the largest food producer in the state, and we have a lot of others, you know, other fishermen that are harvesting for Hawaii communities, but seafood is often left out of these sort of programmatic objectives. And it'd be, it'd be great if we can include seafood in providing same opportunities to feed our community with these programs for food banks, food pantries. We did it during COVID. We had a program with the BUCKS, included seafood during COVID is wildly popular. So, I think it's just time to recognize Hawaii's seafood production and, including our food resiliency and self-sufficiency objectives. Thanks.
Thank you. We also received testimony and support from Chamber of Commerce Hawaii, Fishing Tales with Mike Sakamoto, and four individuals. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? No questions? Okay, we're going to move on to House Bill 774 HD2, Vice Chair.
First up, we have the University of Hawaii System in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Carlos Pinaloso, on behalf of the Community College, we stand on our written testimony and support of this measure.
Thank you. We have the Department of Agriculture in support.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
We have the Agribusiness Development Corporation in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Frank Ampeno, on behalf of Executive Director Wendy Gady, we stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support with a comment that we believe we are the largest food producer in the state.
Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom in support? Lauren Zerble? We have Local Food Coalition in support? Thank you. We also have testimony and support from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, DBED, and two other individuals, two other organizations, or four other organizations and one individual all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on, House Bill 984 HD1.
Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Ulapono Initiative in support? Thank you. And we have Leonara Nicholson in support? Thank you. Also testimony in support from the County of Hawaii Development and Research Development, Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, Purple Maya Foundation, and two other individuals. Anybody else wishing to testify in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, we're going to be moved, yes, Representative Kush.
Department of Ag.
Good afternoon. Dean Matsukawa, Department of Agriculture. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. In this bill, I remember when we heard it in Ag, is there, it's got a lot of open ends to it. And when, and forgive me, when we were talking about it, I think there was going to be some further conversations about, you know, things like lines of credit for food crops, or, you know, it's kind of an open-ended proposition. And as it relates to this committee, was there any numbers that were ever kind of come up with?
As far as appropriation type numbers?
Appropriations, because, you know, an open line of credit means that we need to have that line of credit available, and fixed interest rates, like what is that, five percent? Two percent?
Okay, the intent of the program would be to fix most of that within our rules, as far as the, how we're going to actually effectuate the act. So, the interest rates are already set by statute, so they would be following the classes of loans that we would be using the monies for. The department would, really wants this bill to move through.
Okay.
If an appropriation is not available, we still would rather have the bill move forward without any appropriation. The program has about eight and a half million dollars available currently, so we do have funding. With the increased loan limits and the increased demand due to the lower rates, we anticipate we might need more than that. But if we could go through the first year, we would have an actual feel of how much we need, and we can come back. But we would want this bill to move forward even if there was no appropriation.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of, we had a conversation in the Ag Committee, and I never got a date between there, and so I just...
Yeah, I don't think we ever got to the actual amounts.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks so much for that.
Okay, thank you.
Members, further questions? You can stay there. Okay, Representative Afi?
Sorry, one more question for you. You mentioned that the rates are set in statute. Are they set as fixed percentages, or is it a floating?
By this measure, we would be at the four percent range for most of our loans. It would be only the special development programs, we would be at the three percent, and they would be fixed with this. Currently, we kind of float it. It's one percent below prime, and one and a half percent below prime for our new farmers. But there is a cap of seven and a half percent for regular farmers, and six percent for new farmers. So, we'd be following that. However, if this passes through, then we'd be at the four percent range for most of it.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay, so I have a question. So, and I brought this up to the department before, but obviously, they haven't taken up me, me up on it. So, and I understand financial institutions don't have people that actually do ag loans anymore. At one point in time, there were, where they actually used to have people that were experts in those areas. But I think if the department actually did work with a financial institution or something like that, we got, we could actually increase capacity by having them take first position, you know, instead of eighty-twenty, maybe it's like sixty-forty, and they would take on sixty percent of the rents, have forty percent. The state would have, only have to take on maybe forty percent of the risk, right? And then you can offset any kind of financial difference between what the private, private financial institution is doing. And actually, you'd be able to do more loans with less money from the state, right? Have you guys ever started a conversation with the private institutions?
We do have participation loan programs available. We have those programs available. We also have guarantee programs available.
But actually, whether the financial institution would actually agree to maybe start having people that actually, like I said, at one point in time, there were, there were people in the banking institution that were knowledgeable about ag loans, but they don't do that anymore. But I think it would have to be initiated by the department.
Yeah, we did try reaching out to, you know, First Oland Bank. We were starting convers, and we actually did loans with Hawaii National. So, they were kind of interested in working with it. But, you know, as the industry has shrank, the demand for these types of loans is so small that they don't, they don't have, it wouldn't be worth their time to devote.
That's why I think it'd have to be one institution, not many, right?
Yeah, yeah. But like, as a state program, we cannot favor one over the other, but we were working. Hawaii National did have an interest, yeah.
Okay. Well, this is a new owner for American Savings, so you can...
Oh, yeah, we can reach out.
Talk to them, but... Anyway, members, any further questions? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 858 HD1, Vice Chair.
Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
Thank you. University of Hawaii Systems with comments on Zoom? Oh, oh, first. Okay. Standing with support with comments. Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
You? Ulapono Initiative in support? Thank you. We also have comments from the Office of Information Practices, support from County of Hawaii Department of Research and Development, Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, Purple Maya Foundation, and HFNA, and one individual, all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 773 HD1.
Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miomora here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony and support. As you can see, we're trying to stand on all the bills, but this one's pretty important. First of all, I want to thank the legislature for your efforts last year in raising that ceiling for the grant writer position. We believe that we'll see a true return on investment. The reason I'm speaking is it is critical right now, based on what's going on with the new administration. I'm sure many other sectors that come before you concerned about their funding, especially in the NGO nonprofit arena. We've already seen USD with some cutbacks, and more than ever now, we need to grab as much federal dollars as we can with the limited amount that's going to be out there. So, this is asking for positions. We currently have one position. Again, our farmers and ranchers are going to rely, we can't completely rely on the state, the counties, or philanthropic, to fill the gaps that we see now. We've already seen it. We've seen losses in, in federal programs in the millions already. So, you know, we're taking up a lot of measures, and thank you, Chair, for, for the many bills, biosecurity, loans, grants, farm to families, farm to food bank that you have scheduled today. Many of those are affected. Many of those programs and those issues that affect our farmers and ranchers can benefit from these positions. So, we urge the committee and we urge the legislature to support these positions. The return on investment that they're going to bring in for our farming community is going to be huge. Without it, we're going to struggle, and we're going to rely on farmers themselves, organizations like the Farm Bureau, others, to try to gain access to those funds. So, again, we encourage the committee to pass this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. And next, we have Hawaii Food Industry Association in support on Zoom. Lauren Zerble? We have Local Food Coalition in support?
Good afternoon. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Miyango here on behalf of the Local Food Coalition in strong support. The Hawaii Farm Bureau testified, strong, in strong support. I have nothing further to add other than just a few comments, similar to the return on investment. It truly does serve as a catapult to drawing more federal funding. I think Cherry Yamashita earlier today talked about, you know, some principles about funding. I think this is a great opportunity, just like last year, what the legislature did for the SNAP benefits. This is just as important, so we really appreciate the legislature's support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ulapono Initiative in support?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of Ulapono Initiative, echoing the sentiment from Local Food Coalition and Hawaii Farm Bureau, how crucial this, this bill is in building out capacity as in our grant staff for the Hawaii Department of Agriculture. It's critical, given the uncertainties in the federal funding landscape. So, building that capacity, making these positions permanent so that we can uplift our farmers and ranchers and make sure that they have the funds that they need. There's a preliminary search identified almost thirty million in federal funding opportunities for this next year. We hope to hold on to those and protect those and bring them into the state. So, thank you so much for your support of this measure.
Thank you. We also received testimony and support from one other organization and three individuals. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 782 HD1.
First up, Department of Agriculture with comments?
Chair, the Department of Ag stands on its written testimony.
Got to check.
Next, we have Ahiki Acres LLC in support on Zoom. Haley McKinnon?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and committee. My name is Haley McKinnon, co-owner of Ahiki Acres and President of the La Manala Agricultural Association. I strongly support HB 782. As a young farmer focused on diversified agriculture, I found that many of the agricultural laws and policies are outdated and hinder our efforts in increasing food security for our community. I was very excited to see this bill, which would create a working group to amend or repeal these laws. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. We have five other organizations and five individuals all in support. Are any of them in the room and would like to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? That's your hand, or are you? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1450 HD1.
First up, Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support? We also have support from six other organizations. Are any of them, or anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, moving on. House Bill 1185 HD2.
Hawaii Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its written testimony.
Thank you. University of Hawaii System in support on Zoom or in the room? Actually, University of Hawaii on Zoom? Prinder Grual?
Yeah, we stand in support for this bill. I am in the car, so it's not, the reception is not great, but we appreciate the opportunity, and we... But we appreciate the opportunity and we strongly support it.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support? And Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and Climate Protectors Hawaii in support?
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Members of the Finance Committee, Ted Boland, on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and the Climate Protectors Hawaii. I speak on this bill, which we strongly support. Uh, just to let people know, there's a great opportunity here for Hawaii to develop an industry of plant-based building materials, uh, because of our climate, long growing season. And this would be jobs for farmers, this would be production jobs, and it would also be a great carbon sequestration measure because these plant-based materials, once they're, uh, grown and processed, sequester carbon, and they replace things like timber, concrete, and cement that are extremely emitting of carbon. So this is a wonderful opportunity, and I'd like to be called Bamboo Ted after this.
Noted. Okay, we also received testimony and support from Three Fifty Hawaii and Hawaii Environmental Change Agents, as well as eight individuals. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members' questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill fourteen ninety-seven, H D one.
Uh, Department of Agriculture in support? And Hawaii Farm Bureau in support? We also received testimony and support from Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and comments from Hawaii Crop Improvement Association. Anybody in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, moving on to House Bill four twenty-seven, H D two.
Uh, Department of Agriculture in support? And Department of Land and Natural Resources in support? We have Hawaii Invasive Species Council in support on Zoom?
Yeah, aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, uh, Members of the Committee, Chelsea Arnon, on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. Um, we're standing on a written testimony and support and just wanna, um, recognize the efforts to broaden, uh, the topic of invasive species and biosecurity beyond agriculture with this bill. Um, but also I want to recognize that it really is a coalition of partnerships of the state agencies, partner organizations, and the community that work together on biosecurity. I thought we saw a really great display of that at the, um, the Ag Fair at, that was on the fourth floor today, and you could see all the different entities working together to really prevent and manage invasive species to protect agriculture. But of course, that goes beyond human health, um, the economy and the environment. So, um, again, supporting, um, but just really want to recognize the, the broader aspect of biosecurity and all the agencies working together. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support of this very simple. I hissed that it's actually ag.
Okay. Uh, we have Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, uh, Seagaps, um, with comments?
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kristi Martin, Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, Seagaps. Uh, we wanted to provide comments, and you have our letter, but I wanted to point out three things. Uh, first of all, we really appreciate widening, uh, Department of Agriculture, really to focus on biosecurity as well because, of course, they are the only authority, uh, that is able to inspect and, um, and respond to invasive pests as they come in from domestic sources into the state. Uh, and it doesn't matter if they're agricultural pests. They, they are the ones that are there to, to do that work. Uh, we do respectfully request, uh, considering adding members to the Board of Agriculture to reflect that additional biosecurity expertise. We also wanted to point out that I think, um, uh, the recent draft changed, H D two, removed language accidentally that would allow the Department of Agriculture to quarantine an area that's infested with a pest. Uh, they've recently passed a rule, uh, signed by the governor, um, Rule, uh, four dash seventy-two. That is actually, um, authority that allows them to stop pests, uh, when they're for sale to the public. But if red imported fire ant shows up in the state, the department needs that authority to quarantine the area and keep things from moving in and out. We think it's very important. We suggest just reverting that section back to the original language. That language was good. We also wanted to point out, the Department of Ag receives less than half a percent, uh, of the state budget, and we really do appreciate additional support and attention, uh, on building up our Department of Ag. Mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, we also received testimony in support from Kauai Councilmember Holland, uh, one organization and two individuals. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members' questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill twelve thirty-seven, H D one.
Uh, Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Vice Chair. The department stands on its written testimony in support.
Hawaii Invasive Species Council in support on Zoom?
Yeah, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chelsea Arnon, on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, and will stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Brian Miumoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. Uh, we're absolutely supportive of this. It, the, the bill has changed. It was asking for inspectors, uh, for, uh, Lanai and Molokan. Again, we want to make sure we protect those, those islands within Maui County. So we just wanted to be clear that, that, that we continue to focus this measure on Molokai and Lanai, which we believe it does. But instead of inspectors, because I think the testimony previously was maybe there wasn't enough activity to warrant it, uh, they are now biosecurity professionals. I'm not sure what that is. I think there needs to be a little bit more work, but it does make sense. All right? To make sure that those, uh, uh, positions are active and doing work, uh, based on the limited or the, the, the less amount of, of cargo or products coming in and out of Lanai. But that shouldn't change the fact that those islands need to be protected. And so we want to make sure that the focus remains on Molokai and Lanai. And I did want to speak and, and thank the legislature again. Unfortunately, all the focus on biosecurity. You've heard us say it before, we need to do something. It is terrible. If you were at Ag Day today, you saw how many entities had biosecurity discussions and talking about biosecurity and talking about coconut rhinoceros beetle, little fire ant, koki frog. And again, if we don't do something now, we'll be dealing with these pests ten years from now, but a whole bunch of new pests like red imported fire ant, like the brown tree snake, because we're still dealing with pests of yesterday. And I'll remind you, uh, the estimate today from the L R V study, that the state should be investing in biosecurity annually is eighty-eight million dollars. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We have the Maui Invasive Species Committee in support?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Finance Committee, Taya Peniman with the Maui Invasive Species Committee. And, and thank you for going before me, Brian. I really, really appreciate that lead-in. Um, we stand on our testimony, but I wanted to make a few additional comments. And I'm so glad that he explained about the issue with the increased capacity for Molokai and Lanai. We certainly support that need. Um, but what's been confusing about this bill is that it also appears to include an intent to increase response and control, uh, resources for little fire ants and coconut rhinoceros beetle. But it's not clear how that would happen. The original bill had a specified amount of, I think, three million dollars, which, um, I would be applying for those jobs as inspectors if, if that was gonna cover two, uh, two inspectors on Molokai and Lanai. Um, so I think the intent there was to provide more resources for little fire ants and coconut rhinoceros beetles in Maui County specifically. I do want to point out that we really are at a critical point, especially for little fire ants on Maui. Since two thousand nine, sixteen years ago, we've had twenty-eight different incursions of little fire ants. Of those, um, over eight have been, over thirteen of, fifteen of those actually have been, uh, no ants are still detected there, which is a huge success. But we still have thirteen that are under active delimitation or treatment. Unfortunately, eight of those were detected in the last fourteen months. So we are on a skyrocketing, um, trajectory for new infestations. And although MISCA's had significant support and worked collaboratively with Hawaii Ant Lab and Department of Agriculture, we have done the lion's share of the work on the ground, um, doing those contacts with the landowners, doing the delimitation surveys and the treatment. We currently have nine staff, um, another five that have been working on it out in Hana, and we need more resources. So if there's a way to clarify the intent of this bill here, um, and if you, if, just saying that there's, there's capacity and need there for that. We, it's, the, the bill is clear in Section Three about the intent to provide funding for, um, koki frog work on Maui to MISC through the University of Hawaii, and we support that intent. I also wanted just to note that of the, of those incursions of little fire ants, four of those include, um, areas that, that, property that are TMKs that are, belong to the state of Hawaii. And that for the koki frog infestation, Maliko Gulch, the upper portion, that's, that was really the core, as you know, Chair. That's the core of the original infestation, and a big chunk of that is state land. So I think the Kulianna is there. Also know that Maui County has been a leader among counties in providing resources for the work on invasive species, and we greatly appreciate this increased emphasis. As, as Hawaii Farm Bureau said, we need significantly more resources. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We have testimony and support from Seagaps Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species?
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kristi Martin, Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, Seagaps. Uh, we're in support of this measure. Um, to echo Brian, we definitely would like to see inspectors on Molokai and Lanai as well, if possible. Um, they are the regulatory officials, and they're the ones that need to take action when there's commodities coming in that need to be inspected. Uh, I also wanted to point out, um, that there may need to be a clarification, um, that when there's a formation of, of, uh, an invasive species committee on Lanai, I don't know what we're gonna call that one. I've been thinking about that, Lamisk, I don't know. But they wouldn't solely focus on koki frogs. Right now, the way it's written is, that's how it reads. So it, it may need some clarification. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you. We also received testimony and support from two other organizations, as well as members of the public. Um, sixteen people in support, five people with comments, and three in opposition. Um, is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members' questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next bill. Uh, House Bill six forty-three, H D two.
Uh, Department of Agriculture in support?
Thank you, Vice Chair. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. Um, University of Hawaii System, uh, in support on Zoom? Stand in support, thank you. Um, and Department of Land and Natural Resources in support? Thank you. Hawaii Invasive Species Council, um, in support on Zoom?
Yeah, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chelsea Arnon, on behalf of the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, standing on our written testimony and support.
Thank you. We also have testimony and support from the County of Kauai Office of Economic Development and Kauai Councilmember Holland. Uh, three other, uh, organizations and four, oh, sorry, is Elizabeth Nadel, uh, on Zoom in support?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Uh, please go ahead.
Aloha, committee members. I am Elizabeth Nadel, undergraduate student at Hawaii Pacific University. I am testifying in strong support of this bill, which aims to address the problems wrought by invasive coconut rhinoceros beetle by providing the response program with funds they so desperately need. This is important for protecting Hawaii's communities, environmental, and cultural heritage from the consequences of CRB infestations. Uh, by securing a fund as soon as possible, Hawaii can mitigate any long-term financial risks community from economic harm. Mahalo for this opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, if any of the additional in, for individuals are here in the room and would like to testify? Hawaii Farm Bureau?
Uh, we submitted testimony-
We have your testimony.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, thank you. And Seagap, sorry, I flipped the page, I think. Wait.
Okay, mahalo. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kristi Martin, Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species, Seagaps. We're in strong support of this measure. Uh, state funding would assist the team, the CRB response team, in being able to work in areas, uh, where they haven't been able to put in quite so much time before. And so responding to the invasion on the Big Island, uh, assisting with some more control tools on Kauai, and certainly, uh, assisting Maui with what we hope is a, a limited event where they found it and they haven't seen it for, since the past year, after doing a lot of work around that, uh, infestation site. We know this beetle is gonna continue to move, and, um, supporting this team that has done, um, the vast majority of the research on detection, control, and continues to work on those technologies is really important. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Please? Thank you. Um, anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members' questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the last, um, bill on our agenda, House Bill fourteen forty-nine, H D two.
Uh, Department of Agriculture in support? Thank you. Hawaii Invasive Species Council in support on Zoom?
Yeah, aloha, Vice Chair. Um, Hawaii Invasive Species Council will stand on its written testimony and support. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support? Thank you. Also, testimony and support from one organization and one individual. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members' questions? Okay, we're gonna recess to move into-